I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call, please?
Counsel Clements?
Present.
Counsel Langivan?
Excused.
Counsel Livinggood?
Present.
Counsel Makuchi?
Present.
Counsel McDonald?
Delayed.
Counsel Nicola?
Present.
Counsel Regis?
Excused.
Counsel Spinelli?
Delayed.
Counsel Vandal?
Present.
Five present, two delayed, two excused.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, consider and accept the council minutes of Monday, June 4th, 2012.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. We have a roll call on that, please.
Counsel Livinggood?
Yes.
Counsel Makuchi?
Yes.
Counsel Nicola?
Yes.
Counsel Vandal?
Yes.
Counsel Clements?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number four, subcommittee reports, a general government... A meeting of the general government subcommittee was held on Wednesday, June 13th, in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance were Chairman Spinelli, committee members Counselor Regis and Counselor Vandal, citizen members Stephanie Di Martino and Gabriel LaFleche. Also in attendance were Counselor Makuchi, Counselor Clements, Town Manager Clark, Melinda Ernst Fournier, Roger and Estelle Cowett, Michael James, Dolores Larochelle, Holly Cristo, Sean Moriarty, and Craig Carter. Chairman Spinelli called the meeting to order at 7:00, and he advised of the revised agenda and started with agenda item number two. Agenda item number two, motion to add agenda item regarding the reconstruction of the airport, agenda item number three. A motion was made by Counselor Regis and seconded by Gabriel LaFleche to add agenda item number three. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, five to nothing. Agenda item number one, discuss and vote to ratify the agreement between the town of Southbridge and Maya for the property, workers' compensation, and IOD insurance effective July 1st, 2012, in accordance with proposal submitted May 31st, 2012, and is subsequently amended. Town Manager Clark stated as a result of the tornado, the insurance premiums were going to increase. He explained that Town Treasurer Mindy Ernst Fournier put together a bid package and told our current provider we were going out to bid, and then went out to our previous provider, which was Maya, and asked them to submit a bid. Town Manager Clark stated the school project would be included in this as the school will be ours as of August 7th. Town Manager Clark stated they have budgeted $545,000 for this, and Berry Insurance came in with an estimate of $558,000, which is over the budget, and the Maya quote, including a discount if they pay up front, is $522,705, which is below the budget. Town Manager Clark explained they have two good vendors in the marketplace, and Maya came in with a better bid and recommended to move the insurance back to Maya effective July 1st, 2012. Discussion was held, that Maya also offers incentive programs and training. Counselor Spinelli advised he normally would have recused himself from this consideration because his son-in-law and daughter both work for Berry Insurance, but since they're not going to be awarded the contract, he feels he has the responsibility as a counselor to vote for this project that he does support. A motion was made by Counselor Regis and seconded by Gabriel LaFleche with a favorable recommendation to council to ratify the agreement between the town of Southbridge and Maya for the property, workers' compensation, and IOD insurance effective July 1st, 2012, in accordance with proposal submitted May 31st, 2012, and is subsequently amended. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, five to nothing. Agenda item number three, discuss and vote to ratify the agreement between the town of Southbridge and StanTech for Phase 1 of the airport reconstruction in the amount of $134,391.81 as outlined in the proposal attached. Town Manager Clark discussed the timeliness of this as the school project is starting to wind down, and he will oversee the construction of the airport. Town Manager Clark stated StanTech has been the group that they have contacted with the... contracted, excuse me, with the airport master plan, and they are familiar with the airport. Town Manager explained that there would be two phases of the project, and Phase 1 would replace the blue hangar that was destroyed by the tornado, and one other. He stated the third yellow concert hut hangar would be done in Phase 2 and the terminal building. Manager Clark advised under Chapter 30B, an exemption for airport-related services, this does not have to be bid out. He spoke about the funding source that includes $875,000 in insurance proceeds, which is money they have. Town Manager Clark expressed the importance to get this going and to be put on the agenda for tonight's meeting, as it is the start of the construction season. Counselor Clements stated what is being proposed at this point is the construction of 12 hangars, and this work is being funded with insurance proceeds and will benefit the airport and is not coming out of anyone's money. Town Manager Clark confirmed it. A motion was made by Counselor Regis, seconded by Gabriel LaFleche with a favorable recommendation to council to ratify the agreement between the town of Southbridge and StanTech for Phase 1 of the airport reconstruction in the amount of $134,391.18 as outlined in proposal attached. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, five to nothing. A motion to adjourn was made by Counselor Vandal, seconded by Counselor Regis. Meeting adjourned at 7:25 PM. Respectfully submitted, Stacy Reno, recording clerk. And I don't know if...well, I...there wouldn't be any more subcommittee meetings at this The next item is B, DPW. Counselor Vandal?
We had a DPW subcommittee meeting on June 6th. Attending were myself, council subcommittee members Langivan and Makuchi, citizen members Mark Moran and Maurice Capstrand. Several concerned parties were also in attendance. Agenda items discussed. Discussion held on water runoff issues on rare properties of homes on Charlton Street. Several citizens expressed their concern, serious drainage problems, DPW aware and will be going out there with engineers and hopefully come up with solution by end of July. Discussion held on sidewalks and railroad tracks by Brookside Apartments and Hook Street. Department of Transportation wants to save the tracks. Work to begin on June 11th at tracks by Brookside. Several issues with sidewalks in town and looking into sidewalk work by Brookside. Next project will be Central Street Crossing, then Hook Street. Vote to purchase one of the new backhoes for highway departments...for highway and sewer departments. $8,000 spent on pots to fix 1990 backhoe in past four years. New machine to be shared with sewer department. Motion made to approve purchase in the amount of $60,000 from general fund capital budget and $65,000 from sewer department retained earnings. All in favor. Vote to enter agreement with StanTech consultant in the amount of $26,700 and to raise and appropriate from sewer retained earnings for sludge de-watering system at wastewater treatment plant. Motion made to enter into agreement and raise appropriate $26,700 from sewer retained earnings for sludge de-watering system. All in favor. Vote to enter agreement with Sherborne Consolidated for sludge conveyor work at wastewater treatment plant and to replace pots. Motion made to enter into agreement in the amount of $125,000 and to appropriate $50,000 from sewer retained earnings. All in favor. Vote to appropriate funds in the amount of $750,000 from water retained earnings for construction, police, and engineering oversight for reservoir number five, supply, Eastford Road, clean and line. Motion made to appropriate said funds from water retained earnings. All in favor. Vote to enter into agreement with StanTech in the amount of $45,000 to appropriate funds from water retained earnings for engineering of Dennison Hill Water Storage Tank, as coating is deteriorating. Motion made to appropriate said funds from water retained earnings. All in favor. Vote was taken to enter into executive session to discuss strategy and conduct collective bargaining. Motion made, all in favor. We had a second meeting on June 12th. In attending were myself, council subcommittee members Langivan and Makuchi, citizen members Mark Moran and Maurice Capstrand. Several concerned parties were also in attendance. Agenda items discussed. Vote to enter into contract with Schmidt Equipment under state contract DCR 461 in the amount of $121,600 to purchase a new backhoe for the water department. Will be used mainly for water department. Replaces 25-year-old backhoe, which is unsafe. Having one backhoe to share causes scheduling problem, and water department uses backhoe on a daily basis. Motion to enter into contract with Schmidt to purchase new backhoe in the amount of $121,000. Vote four to one. Chairman Vandal opposed. Meeting adjourned at 7:40 PM. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor. For anybody interested in either one of the subcommittee reports, I believe you can get your hands on these, because Counselor Vandal, I did the abbreviated version, but there is details as to where the money's going. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Okay. C, education, human services. That would be Counselor Clements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A meeting of the EHS Subcommittee was held Wednesday, June 13th, 2012, in the Rice Conference Room. We had Counsel Makuchi, citizen members Holly Cristo and Michael James in attendance, also Counsel Regis, Counsel Vandal, Counsel Spinelli, Town Manager Clark, Roger and Estelle Cowett, Dolores Larochelle, Sean Moriarty, Craig Carter, and John Pulaski. Called the meeting at 7:30 PM. First agenda item was to discuss and vote the change order number seven in the amount of $56,123, revised total as requested by Consigli Construction and recommended by Jocelyn Lesser and Associates for the middle high school project. Town Manager Clark explained the building would be substantially completed by Monday and will be turned over officially to the town by August 7th. He explained they will be slightly under the town's portion of the budget and believes they will be very close to the town's allocation. Town Manager Clark stated a lot of contingencies have been used and explained how the process works. He added that they will probably have change orders from now until October and stated it is not unusual for this type of project. Town Manager Clark discussed change order number seven, which includes MEP, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, and a large portion is the soffit ceiling and sprinkler modifications and building light fixtures. Town Manager Clark stated overall they had a 5% contingency with this project, and they reduced it down to 3% contingency. Counsel Clements stated she's surprised with these modifications, as they are pretty detailed now in availability and systems that put everything in place before one starts building, and expressed disappointment with the request. Town Manager Clark described the process and advised there is a give and take, and everything has been vetted through a good length of time. A motion was made by Counselor Makuchi, seconded by Holly Cristo with a favorable recommendation to council to approve change order number seven in the amount of $56,123. Revised totals as requested by Consigli Construction, recommended by Jocelyn Lesser and Associates for the middle high school project. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, four zero. Agenda item two, discuss and vote to approve the proposal for the Cops and Kids Program to provide transportation to Street or Point Recreation Area in Sturbridge as an alternative swim site due to the closure of the state pool. I stated as the state pool is not ready, they are looking to continue this program that has been very well received over the last couple of years and is very well run by the Police Department. Town Manager Clark stated on the formal agenda for the council meeting, they're going to have two components to the same motion. He explained this is a spending program, and in the past, DCR has funded it because they have not had to pay for lifeguards and use the funding to help transport the kids to Street or Point, and they've used the funding to help transport the kids to Street or Point. Town Manager Clark stated the state pool is now under construction this year, so it will be done for next summer. Town Manager Clark stated the only change in the motion is to add the wording to accept a contact from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, DCR, in the amount of...a contract, excuse me. It says contact, should be contract, from the Commonwealth of Mass, DCR, in the amount of $11,020 for the purpose of doing the alternative site. Town Manager Clark stated Sergeant Jose Dinghy does a great job for them, and this is consistent what they've done in the past two years. A motion to amend the agenda item was made by Michael James and seconded by Counsel Makuchi. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, four zero. And then I read the main motion, which is vote to approve the proposal for Cops and Kids Program to provide transportation to Street or Point Recreation Area in Sturbridge as an alternate swim site due to the closure of the state pool contingent upon the Commonwealth of Mass contractor, DCR, in...again, it should say contract, I think, in the...in the amount of $11,020. A motion was made by Counsel Makuchi and seconded by Michael James. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, four zero. We then moved on to agenda item number three, which was to discuss the violation and penalty fees regarding trash violations and review charter and bylaws regarding the issue of amending the $250 penalty for rubbish violations. I'm going to make a note that I was informed by the recording clerk this evening that there was a bit of a limited time on Thursday to get all the minutes done, I assume because of general government and our meetings and all, so this is an abbreviated version. I'm going to add a few things, and I would ask that if we could get an addendum to these minutes with a more elaborate rendering of what took place at that meeting, because there was a lot of pertinent discussion, and I think if the people would like a copy of that, they should be able to get it. So if that is okay with you. Thank you. So let's see. We spoke about...I spoke about the last meeting and stated recycling rates are up, but would like to discuss the change in the bylaw regarding the penalty fees. Chairwoman Clements explained $250 is a lot of money, and we are a town with a lot of multifamily dwellings. What I mentioned is that about half of our family dwellings are rental income properties, and we have a lot of people who invest in our town, business owners who invest in our town, and they keep their property up and they do a good job, and I don't want to see them as being the only ones penalized. The landlords should not be the only ones penalized. It should be the tenants or those who are actually breaking the bylaws. Okay. So move on from there. I added that tenants should be responsible for the trash violations, not the property owners, and we had a lot of good discussion as to how that could be done, some that will be implemented even before this potential bylaw change. Much discussion was held about the procedures of the trash enforcement, how a change in the penalty structure could affect the residents. Holly Cristo stated she believes this level works as it gets people's attention, and they should stick with what works. We also had, I believe it was Counsel Spinelli commented on the fee structure and the opportunity to have an ABC structure, 2550-100, which is stated in our bylaws versus the 250, and again, we'll have more information for you on that. At that point, Michael James made a motion to amend Section 10-104 to change the wording. Schedule of penalties D through F shall be applicable to schedule of penalties A through C shall be applicable, seconded by Counsel Makuchi. Town Manager Clark asked if he wanted it as a bylaw amendment or just a discussion. Chairman Clements stated it is a recommendation from the subcommittee. After discussion about the process, Michael James rescinded his motion, and Counselor Makuchi withdrew her second. We then went on to make a new motion to have a discussion about the amendment of Section 10-104 enforcement by amending it to read "Schedule of penalties D through F" to be changed to "A through C," which would change the fine structure from 250 to 300 to 25 to 100. Town Manager Clark explained the next steps if the council approved this concept. He stated he would recommend that this go to the Board of Health for review and suggestions, and the council could then take a secondary vote and say, yes, go ahead with the three readings. We want to amend the...I also want you to correct, it says "or the Board of Health could approve," and technically, it's a bylaw, and if we were going to amend it with three readings, it would come through council. So again, we had more discussion on that, and then a...okay, we already had the motion. The motion was made by Michael James, seconded by Counsel Makuchi. Show of hands, all in favor. It was a three to one. Holly Cristo was opposed. I also want to comment at that meeting, a number of other issues in regard to recycling and trash came up. Mr. Pulaski had many good comments, and again, once we have that addendum, we'll read him at the council meeting, or the next council meeting, to make sure that everybody's information is put there for the public. Thank you. Okay. Moving on. Agenda item number four, discuss and possibly vote to approve additional new middle high school items as a result of the School Building Committee meeting 6/13/12 at 5:00 PM. Chairwoman Clements recommended to remove this item as there were none. Town Manager Clark noted at the School Building Committee, they stated there would be a request for a meeting to be held in July. On other information, Roger Cowett expressed concern for properties with unregistered vehicles or junk vehicles, and also buildings that are not up to code. Chairwoman Clements recommended that he contact the inspections and Health Department for assistance. Town Manager Clark stated the community walks will start on Friday mornings again, and stated if there are specific areas that they would like them to look at, they would be happy to do so. A motion to adjourn was made by Michael James and seconded by Counsel Makuchi, all in favor, four zero, and the meeting ended at 8:55. There's no other meeting scheduled at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. D, planning and development?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no report, and I have no meeting scheduled.
Okay. Thank you. E is protection of persons and property. Meeting of the Protection of Persons and Properties Subcommittee was held on Monday, June 6th, in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance were Chairman Langivan, citizen members Roger Cowett and Monique Manna. Also in attendance were myself, Counselor Clements, Counselor Vandal, Town Manager Clark, Police Chief Charette, Acting Fire Chief DeFranzo, Auburn Fire Chief Stephen Coleman, and Estelle Cowett. The meeting was called to order at 7:00 PM. Agenda item number one, vote to confirm the appointment of Mark W. DeFranzo as Fire Chief for the town of Southbridge. Mr. Clark explained the process in hiring of a fire chief is twofold. Thirteen applications were received, two were rejected due to failure to meet the guidelines, seven candidates were selected, and six were interviewed by a panel of four. All four interviewers agreed that Mr. DeFranzo was by far the best candidate. The second part of the process is the contract negotiations. The contract was sent to Employment Council, and conflicts with the statute were found. Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 42 calls for an indefinite term while a three-year term is part of Chapter 41, Section 42A. After researching the records, it was found that there is a split in the past town practices. Chapter 42A was never formally adopted by council. There are two options to adhere to the law. The first option would be to vote to appoint and make the term indefinite and change the contract accordingly. Option number two would be to make the term three years, adopt the contract as-is, and formally adopt the weak chief statute of 42A. The strong chief language, Section 42, runs askew to the charter language. Chief Charette and Chief Coleman gave their opinion and recommendation for Section 42 as an indefinite appointment. I agreed. A motion was made by Monique Manna and seconded by Roger Cowett with a favorable recommendation to council to confirm the appointment of Mark W. DeFranzo as Fire Chief for the town of Southbridge for an indefinite term effective June 18th, 2012, and to ratify the employment agreement consistent with Chapter 48, Section 42. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, three to nothing. A motion to adjourn was made by Counselor Langivan and seconded by Mr. Cowett. The meeting adjourned at 7:45 PM. Respectfully submitted, Evelyn Rivera, recording clerk. And there will be no other meeting at this point. Moving right along. Agenda item number five is chairwoman's announcements. I have a couple. I'd like to talk a little bit about the charter changes and the fact that unfortunately, the legislature, being the legislature, is taking a little bit longer to get this passed through. So approximately three weeks ago, I sent a letter to Senator Moore and CC'd State Representative Peter Durant, and asked if we could include with our charter changes a piece that will allow us to bring those charter changes, since they will not be ready for our election on June 26th, to the November election, saving the town money to have a special election for them, and at this point, that looks like what we're going to do. So I wanted to let you know that. I also wanted to remind you, speaking of June 26th, that the election for council and school committee will be on June 26th, and I do hope, as many of you who are registered to vote, do come out and vote on that day. I'd also like to mention, one of the members of our town council is wrapping up six years, and I personally would like to say to you, Counsel Livinggood, that it's been a pleasure working with you, and your support on many issues and your reasonableness have always been appreciated. I'm going to miss you. Good luck to you in the future and everything that you do, and I hope we still see you around the town council and the town hall. The last thing I want to bring up is a little bit of advertising. I can't find my paperwork. There is going to be a dinner held in July. I had 50 million pieces of paper, please excuse me. The Literacy Volunteers is having a dinner on July 9th. It will be at the Public House. The proceeds from that dinner will go to the Literacy Volunteers, which is a tremendous organization. We have tutors in this town who help people learn English as a second language. They teach them how to read, they teach them how to write in English, speak in English, they help them to apply for jobs. We even have one tutor who has helped a couple of people apply for citizenship. It is a nonprofit. It's a wonderful organization. I can say that now. I'm no longer a part of it, but I was on the board for many years, and it is a great organization. So if you're interested, there will be some flyers in the town manager's office. I just wanted to let you know that Monday, July 9th, at the Public House, will be an all-you-can-eat buffet, Italian feast, all kinds of stuff, zucchini meatballs, eggplant parmesan, salad, dessert, coffee, tea, so on. And adults is $13, and children, four to 12 years old, is $5. You can purchase tickets at the literacy office, which is downstairs in the library, or you can call 765-3880 if you have any questions or want to find out where else you can purchase tickets. You can also get tickets at the door on the night of the event. That's all I have. Now I'd like to turn it over to the town manager. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have several this evening. I will endeavor to go as quickly as possible, but it's the end of the year, and we're trying to get things wrapped up. One item of fairly significant topic is on tornado relief. I was contacted and played a little bit of telephone tag and was finally successful in contacting the Assistant Secretary for Land and Forest Conservation under the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and was informed on, I think it was actually Thursday afternoon, that the town needed to apply for a grant for 2012 tornado recovery assistance. The town has already applied for FEMA. We received 150,000 eligibility for 150,000 for federally funded roadways, which basically is Pleasant Street and Clements Hill. We've tried to maximize our return on those by applying for elements. I believe that we've applied for $90,000 worth of work, but we do have a significant unmet need. I know Mr. Butler tends to come up and has been a very good advocate for some of the needs that exist on Brookside as well as on Charlton Street. So when this opportunity came up, I did prepare and submit a grant application, and I have it at your places. I was told that it was a somewhat informal process, and that if I got material in, that it would be given consideration. I submitted a two-page request. The total amount is $520,000, which consists of basically three components. $400,000 in the needed drainage issues on Brookside and Charlton Street, $100,000 for airport improvements related to the installation of a water line and the installation of a hydrant at the airport, which I believe is going to be a necessity and would have been a help to us if that had been in for the tornado, and then $20,000 for debris cleanup. And the debris cleanup would be to do what the town has done in the past, that if folks that have debris on their property come up and put it by the public way, that we would come by and pick it up. And that request was for $20,000. They anticipate actually sending us the money, and we need to enter into contract with the Commonwealth of Mass prior to June 30th. So what I would like to request this evening is that the town council authorize the town manager to enter into a contract with the Commonwealth of Mass for this assistance money, because we won't have another opportunity to convene a council meeting to do so. And I certainly would like to have this authorization, so if they do award a grant, I have the ability to accept it and to get the money in as quickly as possible for the town. So I guess I would like to kind of formally request that that be an added agenda item for that purpose.
I'd need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to add an agenda item.
You'll second? Okay. Could I have a roll call vote on that, please?
Counsel Makuchi?
Yes.
Counsel McDonald?
Yes.
Counsel Nicola?
Yes.
Counsel Spinelli?
Yes.
Counsel Vandal?
Yes.
Counsel Clements?
Yes.
Counsel Livinggood?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I don't know, do you want to do that now, or do we want to put it on for an agenda item? And I don't know, do you want to do that now, or do we want to put it on for an agenda item? I don't know what the pleasure of the council is.
You can do it now. Why don't we do it now? I have so many agenda items, it'll just get worse. Okay. So we'll do it?
Okay. So again, that wording would be the same, that the motion would be the town council authorize the town manager to enter into contract with the Commonwealth of Mass for the Two Thousand Twelve tornado recovery assistance, and in a grant up to five hundred and twenty thousand. I don't believe we'll get the full amount, but I do believe we have a good opportunity to get the vast majority of that, so.
Okay. Roll, any other discussion on this now? Roll call, please.
Councillor McDonald?
Yes.
Councillor Nicola?
Yes.
Councillor Spinelli?
Yes.
Councillor Vandal?
Yes.
Councillor Clements?
Yes.
Councillor Livinggood?
Yes.
Councillor Markucci?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. I'm sure the residents appreciate it, and hopefully the governor's office is able to award us some grants. Just a few other quick items, and then I do have one that's going to take a little bit. I was requested on the folks that received fines and warning letters, how many were single-family versus multifamily. It was at one of the subcommittee meetings. It was actually three hundred and thirty-three fine, warning letters, a hundred and one were from single-family homes, and two hundred and thirty-two were from multifamily homes. So I know I had that request. Our recycling rate is, for this last week, I think it was forty-two point nine-five percent, the diversion rate forty-seven point eleven, and it's nice that we continue to have that go up. In terms of, the Center of Hope is going to be later this week, on June Twentieth and Twenty-first. The Center of Hope Foundation will be helping to save our parks, and they'll be doing some renovation works at Henry Street and Joe Capillo Parks, and they're looking for volunteers that can help out with this effort. All volunteers should contact Martin Dawson at the Center of Hope Foundation at five-oh-eight-seven-six-four-four-zero-eight-five, extension six-two-eight. And that is part of a community development block grant fund that they received, a grant fund that they received, that they're actually giving back to the town to do some improvements and putting some kids to work, which is a nice opportunity.
Could I ask to take one moment of, kind of slide this in, in your announcements? I did miss one, and it's an important announcement. I'm going to read it. This comes from Rosemary Scrivens, Central Regional Director, Massachusetts Office of Building, Business Development, and it was dated Tuesday, June Twelfth. It's addressed to the town manager and Cassandra Ackley, and it says, "Sandy and Chris, I wanted to congratulate you on your recent nine-hundred-thousand-dollar CDBG award." So once again, we have received the award, and this is a big one. And this is for the traffic and circulation planning, as well as the overland street improvements. We'll be doing work there, and I'm sure that there'll be other projects that Sandy Ackley's office will be looking at for that. So I just wanted to include that with what you're speaking about.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item I have is on the Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day. It's going to be scheduled for Saturday, June Thirty, from nine to one, at the Casella Waste Services Facility at One-Sixty-Five Barefoot Road, across from the landfill. The event is open to Southbridge residents only. No commercial waste will be accepted, and no latex-based paints will be accepted. For more information, please refer to Cable Access Channel Twelve. The Southbridge Cultural Council is doing their annual survey. The surveys are available at the Jacob Petrus Library and the manager's office, as well as the Community Information Table at the main lobby of Town Hall, and the deadline for submission is August Thirty-First. So if you're interested in having information in which letting the Cultural Council know what kind of programs you'd be interested in, your participation in that survey is greatly appreciated. Also, in terms of the library, they are running, they have an event tonight, but they also have an event on Thursday, June Twenty-First, Indian Cuisine Presentation from six to seven-thirty, if interested. And then the last two items I have, one is, I'd like to talk a little bit about Mike Montigny. We have had and have been trying to restructure the cable station. We actually brought in a gentleman that came to work for us for a couple days and then left, which was a little bit of a unfortunate occurrence. And we asked Mike if he would serve as the acting cable manager, and he has agreed to do so. We will continue to recruit to see, and certainly we hope Mike puts in, and if Mike is a successful candidate, maybe he becomes permanent. One of the things, though, that when, there's a few times that I've been town manager where we increased rates significantly, and one of the areas at the request of the Cable Committee at the time was to increase the rates that the local cable folks pay for the local portion of the cable bill, which is really a couple of dollars. It's not a lot of the cable bill. But one of the things I said to the Cable Committee is I wanted to make sure that we actually increase the amount of programming that's on there, that people get a value for the money. And I just, we actually looked from May Twenty-Eighth, Two Thousand Twelve, to six-eighteen, Two Thousand Twelve. We compared that time to the same time last year, and in terms of the number of shows in Two Thousand Eleven, there was fifteen shows. Four of those shows were under ten minutes. This year, we had sixty-four shows and only two shows that were under ten minutes. So I just really do appreciate and applaud the efforts of the cable, the new cable station personnel that are in there, and would like to give Mike an opportunity through you, Madam Chair, to just say a few words.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Clark, and the rest of the council. Just basically want to introduce myself. I'm not going to come up here too often, but Mike Montigny, I've lived in Southbridge my whole life, and as this is a part-time position, I do have a full-time job as a power professional at Wells Junior High, working with special needs kids. And I would like to apologize, last week, we had some technical difficulties with getting the debate on the television, and it's on now, it's all working fine, and it will play right through to the elections. Basically, just wanted to let you know the big things that we're trying to work on, like we were talking about a second ago, return on investment. Thirteen, Channel Thirteen has been very fuzzy for a very long time, and we're trying to get that fixed. They had charter come out before. We actually had problems with graduation a couple days before, and it wasn't going live, so they came out, fixed an amplifier up on the poles, and they're finding a lot of the amplifiers are having issues now. They're filled with water. So we're having charter actually come back out tomorrow to keep working on that. And we're actually considering going to fiber optic lines anyways pretty soon, but we're trying to get our old INET system working back up before we go fiber. And basically, as for the shows that are coming up soon from this town, we've used a lot of filler from out-of-town, but in-state shows, you might have seen a fishing show or a building show in someone's garage. But we have Memorial Day coming up very soon that Bob Canatera has been working on, and a huge thanks to Bob Canatera for everything he's been doing. He's put in a lot of volunteer work, which is pretty much there as much as me. And we're also going to start paying cameramen to come out and shoot, because this is only a part-time position, so we need some more, you know, people helping. It's going to be kind of like an auxiliary type of position, where you put in like four to eight hours of volunteer camera service, and you can get paid around ten dollars an hour for the next hours you do, and that'll start July First. But until then, I covered the Relay for Life, because at the last minute, we didn't have anybody, and that's an important production, I think, to the town. I went out between like five-thirty, nine-thirty, got all those important laps, and Brett French is doing the library demonstration that Mr. Clark mentioned. Yeah, that's pretty much it. I just wanted to let you guys know, we're really working on getting the clarity up, the programming up, return on investment, you know. There's been, there was only ten, almost eleven different hours of programming last year, and now there's sixty-five. So just trying to give everybody, and that's just the public channel, because the government and education is run by them, but just wanted to introduce myself and let you guys know what's going on, Southbridge Community Television. Oh, yeah, facebook.com/southbridgetv. Please like us, we need to be in touch with the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montigny, and welcome.
Thank you, Mike. Just a couple more, promise. One of the things I realized at one of the subcommittee meetings, I was asked to speculate about future development in the industrial park, and I recognize that I created a little bit of confusion. I'm not a guy that likes to create confusion, so just to take a minute, we have, basically, we have the, Commercial Drive has been constructed. Over the next year, I would anticipate that a Barefoot Road extension would be constructed next. Most of that would be done, would be done by the Casella folks on Casella property. Out of that construction on Commercial Drive, we have forty acres that is directly adjoining Commercial Drive. We have ten acres of that, that we will, very shortly, I hope to have the RFP out tomorrow or the next day, for the ten acres of the park, the approval not required that the council had previously voted. The thirty acres, that comprises the balance of that, in order to access that, it would be most advantageous to access that off of the Barefoot Road extension, because it's a higher plateau and we get a better feel for the availability of those lots. Actually, the council chairwoman, I went up and drove to show her what I had, and it is something that, when you see it, it's more readily understandable. So when I spoke about a future road and future development and that the road needing to be built, I was referring to the Barefoot Road extension and then the road into the northern part of the plateau of the forty acres that the town owns. To that end, one of the things that I've been trying to do as well is to advertise the park, try to raise some levels of awareness for folks to know that we have this, and I just really appreciate Jacqueline Goot, a lady from the Worcester Business Journal, on June Tenth, put in an article, which I liked the headline, "Hidden Gem, Southbridge Pushes to Grow Business Base." So we had, I don't know what page it was on, but it's on their website. So we were successful in getting advertising to go beyond just the boundaries of Southbridge. And then I also wish to appreciate the effort of reporter Bryant Lee, who I also took to the site to be able to show him, because it's really a pitcher's worth of thousand words. Even though I can probably do the thousand words, I thought I would, to show him the site. So we took him up there and kind of showed the layout, and there was a story, I think it was on page three today, about the new roadway. So, you know, this contact of letting people know in the larger environment, certainly the TNG has got a broad distribution base, is one of the things that I strive to do, to try to present the town in a positive way, to try to facilitate the sale of property. And then just to the two other couple points here, we do have a second solar RFP that's out, that the second solar one that we're looking at, solar site, would be up by the new middle high school. I know one of the concerns that I heard, that I tried to respond to, is that the new school is energy efficient, but could we do something more with solar? So I thought locating, or potentially locating a solar farm up in that area would make some sense. There's no neighbors, and we could do a site that is significant. I will put this material, both of these, in the council package, so the council can weigh in and look at this. Both deadline dates are after the meetings in July. The second one is Eighty Marcy Street, which is the old, well, would be old shortly, the old middle school. We do have an RFP that is out for that, that is constructed very similar to how we did some of the other RFPs in the community for other properties. So that one is now, currently being advertised on Compas, the state's website. So, you know, a lot of work is still going. I know we're kind of at the end of the year. I like to keep moving and keep things progressing as much as I can. So I just wanted to kind of bring to the board's attention, or the council's attention, that we have these various items that are currently underway. And I just wanted to, too, I recognize that for the entire time that I've been here, I've had an opportunity to work with Councillor Livinggood, and just wish to say that I really enjoyed our time together. I thought that you were a very progressive mind, and certainly from a management perspective, I've enjoyed my time in dealing with you, and sorry to see you, sorry to see you not put in, but I understand that being a public servant is a hard challenge sometimes for folks, but certainly appreciate my interactions with you over that time that I've been here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Agenda item number seven, this is swearing-in presentation portion, and I don't believe we have anything tonight for that. Agenda item number eight is Citizens Forum. Do I have any citizens who wish to come forward? Please identify yourself and your address, please.
Good evening. Monique Manna, Twenty Maple Street, Southbridge, Mass. First, I want to thank everyone that came out Saturday and helped us with community cleanup. We spent a couple hours going down Main Street, going down Hamilton and whatnot, and it's sometimes an adventure, let's say. It feels good, though, to get out there in the community and, you know, and do something positive like that. I like to see my town looking good. Anyways, and second, oh, well, we are going to have another community cleanup in July. We have not set a date yet, but there will be, we'll announce that when we do set a date. Also, I'd like to thank Town Manager Clark for touching on the industrial park a little bit, but I do have a couple questions for Mr. Clark, if that's okay, as for you, Council Chair Nicola. First of all, I just want to just be clear on a few things. I've just been hearing so many different stories, reading different stories and comments and whatnot. If I remember correctly, a couple years ago, was there potential grant money for the second phase of the industrial park, the road, the Commercial Drive? Was there some potential grant money out there for us? And if there was, were we eligible? I mean...
Yeah, good question, from memory, and I'm going from memory. Two things. One is that we had a proposal for about ten million dollars to do Phase One and Phase Two. At the time, the decision was made to do Phase One, which was six million dollars. I did submit, on behalf of the town, a grant request during that stimulus program that they had, the federal government had at that point in time. I think it was for about four million dollars is what I put in. Now, that really is going from memory. The folks from, I think it was the Philadelphia office or the Washington, D.C. office, called me and went through that grant application, so they did have a certain level of interest for that grant, and when they found out that there was neighborhood opposition and that there was some litigation that was involved, they backed away and said, "Not interested." So there was some significant level of interest, because they called me, I did not call them. Obviously, we submitted the grant application, and they did follow up, but once they found out there was neighborhood opposition, that grant died on the vine.
So the litigation, meaning the lawsuit that was out there against the expansion for the...
Actually, the one that was specifically related to the project, that stopped the project, stopped the project temporarily, was wetlands issues.
And also, could that litigation possibly set off people from coming forward and looking at the lots or anything?
No. Actually, I appreciate the opportunity to, for a question, because just in terms of timing, in order to have, I mean, we have a few issues. One issue was, we have a CND facility that's outside, that there's an administrative consent order from DEP that says it shall be brought inside. As part of that administrative consent order, the town's obligation was to provide a roadway and to provide water and sewer. So we have water and sewer in the area, we have the roadway done, the electricity was done at the beginning of this year, and the last remaining step for the sale of lots on that forty acres was that we had to have a public roadway, because you need to have a public roadway in order to have frontage, in order to sell lots. And the council on June Fourth took the final step in making that roadway a public roadway, so lots can now be, can be sold. So technically, we weren't ready to go to start to sell those lots until the council voted fairly recently on June Fourth. So just in terms of the chronology of events, that's the chronology of events.
Okay, and we were under obligation to fulfill that contract, correct? To get that road?
Absolutely.
And if we wouldn't have fulfilled our obligation, there would have been litigation against the town, possibly?
The administrative consent order was through DEP, so we would be in violation of an administrative consent order through DEP, Department of Environmental Protection.
If I could just have one more minute, Council Chair, I think I'm over my five, I'm not sure. Are there any potential buyers currently looking at property up there?
The town has received a... The, the town has received a letter of, a letter of interest to acquire a portion of that ten acres that we will be having in the RFP, and we will be sending that RFP directly to that interested buyer, and obviously, marketing it to whoever's interested. That's why the, the ads are, are key, so people know that we're here and know what we have to offer.
That's great news. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is anybody else?
Dan Butler, thirty-five Brookside Road. I wasn't gonna come tonight, I was actually sitting home eating dinner, and I heard what you said during the Town Manager's announcements. I got here as fast as I could, to see the chief's here, I did not speed.
The chief is in the room, so...
I was, I, under the speed limit, but I just wanna come and thank you for what I heard you say. You know, that's all I've been asking all along, you know, don't forget about us. What you said was, I mean, great. Four hundred thousand for the drainage problem we're having, and I think you said twenty thousand for roadside pickup, along with the, the airport stuff, but I mean, that's, that, I mean, that would, that would hit the nail on the head, like, like we all came last week and talked to you about the drainage. That's kind of our priority right now, but, but, but yeah, if we, I mean, even one round of some, some brush debris pickup, I mean, that's, that's just great, but I just wanted to come down here and say thank you, truly, from, probably speak for the rest of my neighborhood. But, um, just if, I know I mentioned last time I was here, if there's something, you know, I, I mentioned it, but it's been a busy week, I haven't got down to the Town Hall, but, um, signatures, anything now, is this from what you applied to? Does it still require any input from us citizens, or are we, I mean, is there anything we can do at this point?
Pray, pray, just keep praying and...
Oh, we do that.
Keeping your fingers crossed.
But, okay, but, yeah, keep us informed if you could. I mean, that's, that's great news, so just wanna come and say thank you very much. So, have a good night. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butler.
Sean Moriarty, forty-four Maggie Lane. I know there's another forty-some odd agenda items, so I'll try to be quick. Just a couple of quick notes, and I, I haven't heard it as of yet, and I'm not sure if anybody was going to cover it, more or less, just wanted to kind of let people know that apparently tomorrow night, the, the Fire Department will have a color guard out at Fenway Park to present the colors before the game. I thought that was a pretty, a pretty nice thing for those guys. Also, I know somebody had mentioned already, the Relay for Life, they had just raised just under a hundred ninety thousand with this year's event at the close, fell about ten thousand short of three million, over the fifteen years they've done it. I know that while I was there overnight and everything, I saw Councilor Landman a few times, I saw Councilor Spinelli walking the track at one point, if anybody else was there, and I missed you, I apologize, but it, it is a big event for the town, more than two thousand people come out, and, and as personally a cancer survivor, I think it's a kind of a big deal. That said, kind of, you know, over the last several months, going through different sorts of viewpoints, or a different set of lens, looking at certain things, one thing that, that I kind of thought of afterwards was not so much just the town in terms of a governmental body, but the town in general. I think it would be, it'd be great if we could find a way to, to better support this kind of an event, considering it's about two thousand people, more than half, I would guess, are probably coming from out of town, at Southbridge, Sturbridge, Charlton, but as well as beyond. My team in the last two years, we've had people from Florida, Maryland, Colorado, New Hampshire, Connecticut, and elsewhere. So, those are people coming into town, getting gas, buying sandwiches, possibly, you know, we had people staying at the DOD last year, things like that, and whether it's through Sandy Ackley or, or just local businesses, the downtown partnership, kind of better marketing towards those folks as they come in might be helpful. And lastly, I suppose it, hopefully, this grant money can help reduce the need for this, but a few weeks ago, I had sent in a letter to the editor to the paper in regards to the tornado anniversary, and more or less, kind of put out there my thoughts as to more community service towards those folks, or, or more work in that regard. I hadn't had a whole lot of feedback on that. I know Mr. Butler had commented, I spoke to him a few times about it, but we also had a woman, Karen Rakowski, who contacted me with an idea as far as a fundraiser, so more or less, kind of trying to promote that today. Very preliminary stages on this, but we're talking about doing some sort of art type of fundraiser with the local schools and otherwise, to try and do some sort of artwork, kind of present it as a gallery, as a fundraiser, people coming in, especially if the kids are doing it, you figure mom, dad, grandma, grandpa, Uncle Joe, Aunt Sally are all gonna come out, pay a nominal fee to get in, perhaps buy something, and those sort of things to help. Originally, we talked about for drainage, for the cleanup work, hopefully, that grant can kind of take care of this, and, and this can be something extra for those folks, or, or perhaps the, the memorial type thing that Mr. Butler has mentioned. So, if anyone has, has any interest or thoughts on that, feel free to get in touch with me. Easiest way is by email, at sean moriarty nine at gmail dot com, S-H-A-U-N-M-O-R-I-A-R-T-Y, the number nine, at gmail dot com. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just on that vein of things, Mr. Moriarty, too, one of the things we, we hadn't mentioned too much about, because we're sort of waiting for it to wrap up, but the community dinner that was held, brought in, it was, people were very generous, we had a very large donation from Carl Stores, we had donations from another, other, another number of other entities, cash donations, along with all the product donations, and in the end, it looks like, and also Stephanie DiMartino sold more of her t-shirts and submitted that money, and we were told that we may get a portion of the race, the road race proceeds that came through town the next day. It's looking like we are over twenty-five hundred dollars or so in, in, in some extra funding, which would potentially, which will go towards the recovery efforts, and I believe there's a, a little bit extra from the last public-private partnership situation that we were trying to do cleanup with. So, the game plan on that would be to utilize those funds at the per day price, similar to what's in that, what Mr. Clark mentioned in the grant proposal, to be able to at least get a few days if we can't get the twenty, and we've been mentioning that to, to some Mr. Butler and a few others. So, we, we hadn't really brought it out yet, but you're asking about some funds, and, and there are some funds now earmarked specifically for...
Right, right. I'm not...
No, no, I'm just letting you know, just, just letting the people, you know, it is have, there are some other venues too, but I like the idea of doing more, certainly, but I just wanted you to know, and that there were some extra funding, and that's, it's all earmarked for the tornado recovery situation for those people, especially on the Charlton Street Brookside side of things. So, just information, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cara Donovan, I reside at eighty Pine Ridge Road in Southbridge. Tonight, I'm here on behalf of the Southbridge Elementary PTA, and I wanted to just let you know that the Southbridge Elementary PTA held its twentieth annual Reach Out and Read literacy program on Wednesday, June ninth, twenty-twelve, uh, June sixth, I'm sorry, it was on June sixth, not June ninth. For those unfamiliar with Reach Out and Read, that is when we invite guest readers to come into our elementary schools and read to all the students in our classrooms. Our readers include business managers, civil, civil servants, local business owners, retired teachers, parents, members of the Southbridge Optimist Club, and then basically, anybody else from the community who was interested in taking part in the program. Our goal of Reach Out and Read is to relay the message to our students that reading is both fun and very important. The Southbridge Elementary PTA, we purchased all of the books for our readers, and then all of the books were later donated to each of the classrooms. So, my point tonight to come is to be here and to just graciously thank everybody who participated in that event. We had over fifty-five readers that came into our schools on that day. There were members from our local banks, local businesses, Hides, Big Bunny, United Way, we had a bunch of department heads from Town Hall, we had some parents, we had some retired teachers, and I would personally like to thank Town Manager Chris Clark, who was over at West Street School, and Counselor Clemens, as well as Counselor Livinggood, that also participated in our event. I know in the past, Counselor Nicola has generously given of her time, and I know Counselor Spinelli's on the list for next year. So, again, thank you all for participating, and we would also like to extend our thank you to the principals of those three elementary schools, Diane Shaw, Bryant Montigny, and John Riley, as well as to their staff. This is a very worthwhile and important event that we do every year for our children who are in grades K through five, but without the community participation, it wouldn't be possible, and this, again, was our twentieth year, so thanks to everybody who participated. Thank you.
Thank you, Cara.
My name is Hugh McKinnon, twenty-one William Street, Southbridge. I just have a simple question, perhaps through the chair to the manager or whomever. I've been trying to figure out, I haven't been able to get a hard, fast figure on this, but if anybody has a precise figure on what the town debt is, if that could be offered, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
The town debt?
The town total debt. Yeah, I, I can get that, I don't have that off the top of my head.
Okay. What's his name? Hugh McKinnon. All right. Okay. Okay. Manager, I don't know if you heard, the manager, we'll, we'll get that information. If you want to follow that question up, Mr. McKinnon, at the Town Manager's office sometime this week, he's going to research that for you.
If you stop by, or we can provide that information to you.
You're welcome.
My name is Mike Murray, twenty-sixth Lynn Lane. First, I'd like to speak to you as the Vice President of Southbridge Youth Soccer Association. This Saturday, June twenty-third, ten to twelve, Southbridge Youth Soccer Association, in cooperation with the Optimist Club, is holding our second annual dribble pass and shoot contest. Awards will be handed out at twelve-thirty. Contest will be held at Charlton Street Field this Saturday, and it's open to all children ages six to fourteen. Southbridge Youth Soccer is happy to work with the Optimist Club in offering this soccer contest to the children of Southbridge.
Thank you.
If I could step out of that official role and speak as a citizen. I'd like to discuss the senseless destruction in this town. I could start with town-owned fences being vandalized and dismantled for fun and amusement, or historical field dedication markers being vandalized, or dog owners who have no regard for cleaning up after their pets at town-owned facilities or elsewhere in town. But I've already brought those things to the attention of the proper authorities, and some of those issues are already being worked on. Tonight, I'm here to talk about the senseless destruction of trust in our town government. Destruction of trust brought about by trash actions, this town is pursued, not only this year, but in previous years. I am not specifically talking about the punitive trash fines that came about because of the defeat of the Smart Card proposal. No, I'm specifically pointing out the rude, erroneous, or less than honest way the benefits of the Smart Card were promoted to the people of this town. So many times, we were told that if the recycling rates went up, there would need more money for the town of Southbridge. The last EHS meeting exposed that despite recycling rates going up, there would be no monetary benefit to the town. I went to every meeting there was on the Smart Card issue and asked several times, "Who is the next closest town on the list, and how close are we to surpassing them?" I never received a proper answer to that question, and I still want one. Instead, I was repeatedly told that this was the very reason why it was so important to increase our recycling rates. When complaints came to those opposing the Smart Card, that no alternative solutions were being brought forward, those people in attendance offered suggestions, and some good conversation was had. I offered suggestions. I suggested that a public goal promotion billboard, much like what the United Way puts up, be centrally located for the public's buy-in and cooperation. It was suggested as a means to increase communication and education, and to work with the people of this town, and not against them. Let me tell you, looking back, I feel strongly that that was the moment for an open, an honest, transparent form of government to speak up and say, "That can't happen, because there's no mechanism for it." Sadly, it didn't happen, and I think it should have. It did finally happen at the last EHS meeting, because recycling rates have gone up, and the lingering unanswered question resurfaced, revealing a four-years-too-late hidden disclosure. Our health director is the so-called expert in this area. He has oversaw the site assignment condition since their conception in two thousand and eight. The man who you appointed and trusted to provide accurate information to you in order for you to make good decisions for this town, has not only let you down, he's let the citizens of the town down. I have no way of knowing when he found out that the site assignment condition number nineteen was unenforceable. All I know is what he did and didn't do. I know that for over a year, I've listened to him going on about the revenue surcharge benefits for the town for increasing its recycling rate. I also know there's an expert working every day in this field. For the last four years, he has had ample time to come forward with this two thousand and eight disclosure, but he didn't, and he should have. The lack of disclosure for this information before now is completely unacceptable. I hope you seriously consider that a little later tonight. This has been a very divisive issue, and there are better ways to handle it. Most of you up here have said that you're here...
Excuse me, Mr. Murray. You've reached your five minutes, will the council entertain, I will entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion that we allow an additional...
Second.
Second, all in favor? Okay, continue.
Thank you very much. Most of you have said that you're up here and involved to move this town forward, and for that, I thank you for your efforts. However, again, I caution you in how you move the town forward. Let me give you an example. Picture a fish swimming along happily, until a big bird swims down and pulls it from the water and flies away with it. That fish is certainly not going to a better place, but he is still moving forward. Can we please get back to making Southbridge a better place, and collectively, stop providing reasons to not trust this form of town government? A new solution is necessary to restore the validity of site assignment condition number nineteen and the trust of the Health Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
I, I don't want to belabor it, but I do think fair is fair and, and right is right. In terms of condition nineteen, I believe it's the, the dollar a ton that, that's in addition, and I just wish to, to clarify, I certainly do not wish to enter into debate, but the condition is that if the town's recycling rate is significantly superior to others, and again, I'm paraphrasing, so if it's, if it's better than others, the town has the ability to apply a surcharge of a dollar a ton onto it. I believe Mr. Palowski at, at the last EHS meeting brought that up. That's actually interesting and, and something that we need to, we need to do, and we need to understand. Certainly, in the time that I've been here, our recycling rate has been in sixteen to eighteen percent, not something that is gonna kick in that clause. Now, since, within the last few months, we're in the forty percent range, we now, for the first time in that time, will we be at a position in which we can say that we have a better recycling rate than another community. The difficulty is in the details. Just as an example, the town of Sturbridge, which I happen to live, has a recycling center. When you bring your recycled goods, the recycling rate that's given for the town of Sturbridge is a recycling rate for those residents that utilize the recycling center. There's probably about seventy-five percent of that community that uses private haulers, maybe Casella, maybe one of the other haulers. Casella certainly would have some mechanism to tell us what their percentage is, but not the whole town. So, the, the Health Department, and Mr. Moran in particular, have been working diligently for probably about the last year, working with Casella to be able to identify what the recycling rates are in those communities that bring us their goods, that we would be able to then assess the surcharge. But sometimes, things that appear simple aren't quite that simple, but we are working on it, we certainly want to maximize what the town has... But we are working on it. We certainly want to maximize what the town has, and the purpose of that is to promote recycling and to promote recycling rate. And now that we're at a point where we have the opportunity to do that, it becomes much more relevant, and we will accelerate those discussions on the recycling rate so we can capture that dollar a ton. But to sit and say, like, we've hid something for a long time, I, I don't believe is really fair criticism. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Good evening. Rajesh Kaur, the Attorney General. I'm here to compliment the Highway Department for doing a terrific job removing the railroad tracks down, down East Main Street, crossing the Golden Greek with over 37 years, and we're waiting to remove all those tracks. And I'm, I'm sure that thousands of motorists in town of Southbridge, as well as communities, are also as well pleased as I am, because now you can save your wear and tear on your, on your brakes, and also your wear and tear on your, on your front end of your vehicles. Thank you very much, and also, without the finances from the town managers and the highway superintendent and all the people who made this possible, I, I say thanks, and they, they really deserve a round of applause because they did a terrific job and along over the, thank you very much.
Thank you, Raj. Thank you.
John Palowski, Oldwood Stock Road. First, I, I'd like to thank Mr. Livinggood as well. We haven't always agreed on things, but that doesn't matter. He's the town councillor, I'm not. He's served the town for six years. I'd also like to thank Mr. Spinelli and Mrs. Clements for their service, their incumbents. We don't know if they're at the next meeting, but thank you for your service as well. One thing I was disappointed to read in the telegram is that Mr. Bernadone isn't being, isn't being reappointed. I don't know about his service on the liquor board. I know he's been there for many years. But I am disappointed he isn't going to be on the Board of Health. The interpretation, or the reasons that were given in the paper, you know, I'm not, Mr., I don't want to get into debate with Mr. Clark, but I think that Mr. Bernadone's actions were in the best interest of the health of the people in town, perhaps not the wealth of the budget, but he had a excellent understanding of the issues and the chemistry related to what comes out of the landfill, and I'd like to thank him for his service as well, and I hope that if the voters of town choose to have five members of the Board of Health, that the town manager will respectfully reconsider the, the inspiration behind Mr. Bernadone's diligence in protecting the health of the people in this community. Another reason I have come up here tonight, well, I, regarding this site assignment issue, there are a handful, perhaps as many as six, I mean, if someone really wanted to be a Philadelphia lawyer, I can see nine places where someone could claim that the site assignment is not being followed. And those aren't suggestions. Those are supposed to be absolute, well, commandments. And when they're out of sync, the Board of Health has the authority to instantaneously, in one meeting, that's a fair enough reason, breaking the site assignment to hold up or even remove the current site assignment. Now, something else I've read that was contrary to what I heard in the subcommittee meeting, and I know how things can sometimes get garbled with the media, you know, but it suggested that some of the land in the land swap with Casella might be used as additional space, an increase of the footprint of the landfill. Now, I just, I wanted to be clear that if that happens, that will require, and I've checked this with the DEP, a major site assignment. So that site assignment we had years ago, we would have to have a major site assignment. And that, that's, that's going to, that's going to be an expensive process, and I just want to bring that to people's attention. Because in my opinion, the current conditions aren't being respected. Mr. Clark has mentioned in the past the complications in negotiating with a big company like Casella, but the Board of Health's ability to end that site assignment in one meeting gives Mr. Clark a really big stick in his negotiations. And he can really put the hammer down, and if he sends that invoice with the additional dollar a ton, and they fail to meet it, that's a violation of the site assignment, and the DEP, give them a call, they'll back you up on that, 100 percent. But once again, thank you for your service, all of you, not just those of you that are incumbents, and I hope that a lot of the people in town, but let's have a record-breaking turnout this year, a record-breaking turnout, because democracy is a really good thing. Okay, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Do I have any other citizens wishing to come forward? Okay, moving on. Agenda item number nine. Vote to confirm the appointment of Mark W. DeFranzo as Fire Chief for the town of Southbridge for an indefinite term effective June 18th, 2012, and to ratify the employment agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Counsel McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the town manager, I just want to clarify something. I see in the cover letter of the packet, the discussion between Deputy Chief Pay and the Fire Chief Pay. I just want to be certain, the EMT stipend, that's applicable, as I see it, to the Deputy Chief's salary. It's not applicable to the Fire Chief's salary. The final salary is $89,000. There will not be a $5,000 stipend for paramedic EMT as the Fire Chief.
Yeah, good, good question, fair question. In terms of the compensation package, there's two issues. One is in the compensation package, he's entitled to the benefits that non-union employees receive. In, he basically, I won't, let me just be more direct. He, it's his intent not to get the EMT stipend, the full $5,000, the paramedic type level. It is his intent to get the benefits that he's eligible for, which would be, I think it's the basic, the basic stipend that he would be eligible for, that's about $3,500. So instead of $5,000, $3,500. By town regulation, that's been promulgated and in place since 2006, he's still eligible to receive that. The previous chief was eligible for that, and uniformed personnel not in the union are eligible for that. So he would be eligible for those benefits, which I believe also include uniform allowance and, and things of that nature, that uniformed, non-union personnel are eligible for. So he would be eligible for that benefit under that other regulation.
Follow-up to the Madam Chair. I disagree with that. There was, the whole purpose of an FLSA exempt employee is the salary is the salary, and exactly what specific citation states that a, not a, an exempt employee is entitled to union benefits? Because that's certainly not the case. That's something we control, and I'm all in favor of this candidate, and I'm all in favor of compensating favorably, but we're paying this person to be a manager, and the salary should be commensurate with the duties, and we already pay for the, the town pays for the maintenance of it. He's going to get his continuing education units on duty. The town will pay for that. He could go on duty, and he'll be compensated for that. We pay for the renewal of the certification. There's no need to get any additional compensation because the, the duties, he's not going to be riding the ambulance. I wouldn't expect a Fire Chief to be riding the ambulance. There's no need to pay a stipend. The, the union, I understand why they're entitled to it, but not for a manager. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And just Madam Chair, the Federal Fair Labor Standard Act sets a minimum floor for compliance. When a town, as the case is here, sets a practice or a policy that's in place, and the employee meets the criteria of that policy, they're entitled to those benefits. And that policy's been in place at least since 2006, so it is something that's been around for an extended period. So to the councilman's comment, I have to follow the regulations that are in place in terms of the administration of this contract.
Madam Chair, I would just, what I would like to see is, if we're going to, if we're going to have that discussion, then we should have that policy in front of us, and it should be chapter and verse that says, "This is exactly why," because I don't believe that's the case. There was much to do about it, which unfortunately caused some problems with the previous town manager and the Fire Chief both departing before their, their time, I would say. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any further discussion on this issue, on this vote?
Madam Chair, if I could, I just wish to say that the, the candidate normally would be here this evening. He was greeted by his fiancee with a surprise trip and is actually down in Florida. So I would like to request that if the vote is favorable on both points, that we invite the chief in to be able to do a formal swearing-in ceremony so he can take pride in, in the, in the great accomplishment that hopefully he will receive, depending upon the council's vote.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just don't want to let my comments relative to the stipend dampen the thing, because I think we have a fine candidate here, and I think that the committee did a great job, and appreciate the assistance of all the people who served on the committee, in particular, Chief Coleman, a very well-respected colleague in District 7, and just want to congratulate them on a good process. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The committee actually consisted of Chief Stephen Coleman, Police Chief Dan Charet, Town Manager, and myself. And we unanimously felt that this, that Mark DeFranzo was the best candidate for the position. All right. If there's no other further comments, then I suggest we move on to the roll call. Please.
Counsel Nicola?
Yes.
Counsel Spinelli?
Yes.
Counsel Vandell?
Yes.
Counsel Clements?
Yes.
Counsel Livinggood?
Yes.
Counsel Makuchi?
Yes.
Counsel McDonald?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Unanimous. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 10. Vote to confirm the reappointment of James Moran as Board of Health Director for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Counsel Spinelli?
Yes.
Counsel Vandell?
Yes.
Counsel Clements?
Yes.
Counsel Livinggood?
Yes.
Counsel Makuchi?
Yes.
Counsel McDonald?
Yes.
Counsel Nicola?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 11. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Robert G. Caprera Esquire as Town Council for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2013.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counsel Vandell?
Yes.
Counsel Clements?
Yes.
Counsel Livinggood?
Yes.
Counsel Makuchi?
Yes.
Counsel McDonald?
Yes.
Counsel Nicola?
Yes.
Counsel Spinelli?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Okay, I have, the next 28 agenda items are all votes for reappointment. And with the councils, and the council will indulge me, I'm going to ask that as we do each one of these, we do it as a show of hands, but there will be an opportunity for discussion before we do the show of hands, just so we can move this along, if that's okay. So I'm moving on to agenda item number 12. Vote to confirm the reappointment of attorneys Mark Babrowski and Lisa Meade of Blatman-Babrowski and Meade LLC as Special Municipal Counsel for the town of Southbridge for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2013.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. 12, vote to confirm the reappointment of Daniel R. Charet to the Educational Fund Committee for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2013.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. 14. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Arnold Lani to the Educational Fund Committee for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2013.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. 15. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Arnold Lani to the Scholarship Committee for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2013.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. 16. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Arnold Lani to the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2013.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. 17. Vote to confirm the reappointment of A.J. Larachelle to the Educational Fund Committee for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2013.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. 18. Vote to confirm the reappointment of A.J. Larachelle to the Scholarship Commission for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2013.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. 19. Vote to confirm the reappointment of David A. Livinggood to the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2013.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, discussion, I'm sorry.
Just a question, Madam Chair. I know that we have Arnold Lani as one of the members. I thought one of these was the council appointment to the Central Mass Regional, that it's a council member, and I thought that's what Counsel Livinggood was filling for the Central Mass Regional Planning.
Is that true? There's more than-
I think he is the representative on behalf of the council. I think it's by practice been a member of the council, but I don't think there's a necessity. I, I may be wrong, but I, I don't believe there's-
Oh, I see.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're here. You want to keep doing this?
I'll keep doing it.
Oh, good. Get to see you once in a while, maybe.
Maybe.
Maybe. Okay. With that, you have a, you're just waving at me? Hi. Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. 20. Vote to re, to confirm the reappointment of Mark DiPietro as a public waiter for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2013.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. 21. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Stephen Lovely as a public waiter for a one-year term effective July 3, July 1st, 2012 through June 20th. That should be June 30th, 2013.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous. 22. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Kenneth Delage as a public waiter for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2013.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. 23. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Hank Moran as public waiter for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2013.
So moved.
Second.
All in, any discussion? All in favor? Okay. 24. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Naito Lam as parking officer for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2013.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. 25. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Leonard J. Vigno to the, the Airport Commission for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2015.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. 26. Vote to confirm the reappointment of John Swenson to the Traffic Commission for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. 27. Vote to confirm the appointment of Richard Harwood to the Agricultural Commission for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2015.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. 28. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Stephen M. Sutton as Constable for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. 29. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Thaddeus Dubsky as Constable for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Sorry, was there any discussion on that one? It was unanimous. Thirty, number 30. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Maureen Doyle to the Southbridge Trails Committee for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2015.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. 31. Vote to confirm the reappointment of John Sypek to the Board of Registraz for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2015.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? 32, vote to confirm the reappointment of Rosa McDonald to the Council on Aging for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? 33, vote to confirm the reappointment of Helen Lenty to the Historical Commission for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. 34, vote to confirm the reappointment of Roland A. Varon to the Recreation Committee for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. 35, vote to confirm the reappointment of Joseph Lasavio Jr. to the Recreation Committee for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? 36, vote to confirm the reappointment of Seth LaJoy as Library Trustee for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. 37, vote to confirm the reappointment of Thomas Ayew Jr. to the Cable Advisory Committee for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. 38, vote to confirm the reappointment of Michael P. Daniels to the Conservation Committee for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. 39, vote to confirm the reappointment of Kathleen Shields as Animal Control/Dog Officer for a one-year term to begin July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2013.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Makuchi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the Town Manager. Mr. Clark, is this usually a one-year appointment?
I believe it is. By statute or by practice, I don't know if the chief, I see the chief in the audience.
It's usually a split deal. The ACO is usually a three-year. The animal inspector, that falls back to old times, you know, the barns and chickens and cows and all that. And typically, that's the one-year part. That's us in Boston appointing that person. It's still a position in communities, so that's usually the one-year piece.
So this should be a three-year?
The animal control itself, correct.
Can we make, can I?
Can I make a motion to change to a three-year term?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of that amendment? Okay. So we're going to change this from a one-year term to a three-year term, and it will read, "Vote to confirm the reappointment of Kathleen Shields as Animal Control/Dog Officer for a three-year term to begin July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2015."
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Okay. We'll get back to roll call on these. Vote to, this is item number 40. Vote to ratify the agreement between the town of Southbridge and Maya for the property, workers' compensation, and IOD insurance effective July 1st, 2012 in accordance with proposals submitted May 31st, 2012, and has subsequently amended.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Can we have the roll call, please?
Counsel Clemens?
Yes.
Counsel Livinggood?
Yes.
Counsel Makuchi?
Yes.
Counsel McDonald?
Yes.
Counsel Nicola?
Yes.
Counsel Spinelli?
Yes.
Counsel Vandell?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number 41, vote to approve change order number seven in the amount of $56,123 revised total as requested by Consigly Construction and recommended by Jocelyn Lesser and Associates for the middle high school project.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? We have a roll call, please.
Counsel Livinggood?
Yes.
Counsel Makuchi?
Yes.
Counsel McDonald?
Yes.
Counsel Nicola?
Yes.
Counsel Spinelli?
Yes.
Counsel Vandell?
Yes.
Counsel Clemens?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number 42, vote to authorize the Town Manager to enter into a contract with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Recreation and Conservation to fund the proposed $11,020 for the COPS and Kids' Summer Program to provide transportation to Streeter Point Recreation in Sturbridge as an alternative swim site and any other action required to support the summer program due to the reconstruction of the state pool on Randolph Street.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? We have the roll call on that, please.
Counsel Makuchi?
Yes.
Counsel McDonald?
Yes.
Counsel Nicola?
Yes.
Counsel Spinelli?
Yes.
Counsel Vandell?
Yes.
Counsel Clemens?
Yes.
Counsel Livinggood?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number 43, vote to ratify the agreement between the town of Southbridge and Schmidt Equipment of North Oxford, Mass. under state contract DCR 461 in the amount of $121,600 to purchase a new backhoe for the Water Department.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now we have two backhoes on the agenda. We talked about one before. This is not the time to be buying new equipment. I'm going to be voting no on this. And that's, I just, I'll wait till the other one to ask the question about the next one. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any other, do you want to speak on that?
Yeah, not necessarily on that comment, but in regards to, I was requested at the subcommittee about when the appropriations for 43 and 44 were done. The 43, the one that's currently, was actually appropriated as part of the operating budget, and that was done on May 21st, 2012. So the funding came out of the operating budget for that.
Okay. Yes, Counsel Vandell.
I'm going to be voting no on that, number 43, because I thought that one backhoe would have been enough. I okayed one for the sewer department, but I didn't want one for the water department because I thought they could share. And they said they can't share because they're conflict or whatever. But I still think, you know, we could have went with one and we could have managed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, does anybody else have any comments? Counsel Clemens?
I just want to make sure, we were told about this backhoe at the last meeting. Mr. Cutler, Mr. Blanchard, they explained the present backhoe with its unsafe conditions. Could you potentially elaborate on that for the community so they understand?
I think there's two things. Both of these machines are exceptionally old. They have a lot of mileage on them in terms of hours. I believe on the water department backhoe that the unit creeps forward unexpectedly. And certainly having folks in the ditch as the machine is moving when it's not anticipated to be moving. And we have 138 pieces of equipment in our inventory. We only have two backhoes. So to just have one in case it breaks down really doesn't provide any backup for ourselves. So I think having two in the inventory does make some sense because everything breaks over time. So for this one and the next, the recommendation is to do two for that reason.
Thank you.
And this is, is it my understanding also from that meeting that this is the backhoe that broke down during the teletile cleanup efforts?
Yes.
Yes.
Which only left us with one to take care of our, how many miles of water and sewer lines?
Hundred.
It's about 100 miles.
Along with everything else. Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that people knew the discussion that happened at subcommittee since we aren't televised those at this point. Hopefully, we will in the future. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Counsel McDonald.
Just to add to that, when you look at the hours, 10,000 hours seems like a lot, but when you look at the age of the equipment, it averages out based on a regular workweek to 8.75 hours a week that the equipment would be used. I think it could have been repaired. Would be a lot cheaper. We're looking at now between these two items and the street sweeper, a total of $420,000 that were added to the budget. Now, in terms of putting in the budget, when you have that much extra to fool around with, that kind of concerns me. And again, looking at the average use, and a lot of the stuff that we do, I've seen contracts that we've outsourced, which this equipment was used. So that's why I'm still, I'm going to be voting no. I think we could have done this a different way. Thank you.
I can't hear you. I can't hear anything you're saying.
I can hear myself coming back, so that's what I'm, I'm adjusting my voice because I can hear myself in the speakers.
Okay.
The cone of silence.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anybody else have anything they want to add?
Counsel Makuchi. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for the general public, and this was discussed in subcommittee. From my perspective, my years on the council, and if council members could bear with me, I'm too loud now, right? If council members could bear with me, in our subcommittee, in my years on council, I've never been appointed to a DPW Subcommittee until this year. And I'm going to tell you I've learned a lot. We've put the DPW Department on the back burner. And their department, just like our police, our fire department, and it seems, over the years, not always, but when we have representatives come before us from police and fire that, you know, they need new cruisers, or they need equipment or apparatus, we're concerned about their safety, and we kind of yes those agenda items because of public safety. When you have employees from the DPW and the water and the sewer come before us in a subcommittee meeting and tell us that their equipment is dangerous to them, you know, when you think of a backhoe weighing thousands and thousands of pounds, that this backhoe actually jumps, and we've had employees from DPW, water and sewer that were almost injured. So I have to support this. They've done a great job in maintaining their equipment, you know, just for the water and sewer. There's over, I think, 100 miles to cover. They're there for us, and I just think it's unsafe to the employees, and I wouldn't want to see anything happen to anybody for $126,000. Some of their equipment's over 25 years old, and we maintain other equipment in town, and I think it's time that we start looking at the DPW Department also. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Livinggood?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Counselor Makuchi. I mean, it comes to a point, what price do you put on the life of an employee of the town or an injury? Equipment gets to the point where it's time to replace it. You write it off and get rid of it. Let it be somebody else's problem. This town can't afford to have somebody injured or killed. Most of these people work for this town, live in this town. I don't want to see this town have to go through that. I will support it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion up here?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I did want to point out one more thing. Thank you. I'm sorry for interrupting you.
It's okay.
But it's also come to our attention, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Clark, aren't we putting in close to $10,000 a year on some of this equipment?
On, I believe on this one, it's $8,000 over four years, but that's strictly parts only. So if, actually, no, I'm thinking of the next one, aren't I? I think it was $4,000, $5,000 this year alone on this piece.
But it's relatively, on both agenda items, it's relatively the same story?
It is relative. Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Yes, Counselor.
Have there been any OSHA citations against this equipment?
Municipalities are actually exempt from OSHA.
Tom, could you, would you mind coming up here? Tom Cutler? I'm going to ask Tom Cutler, if you don't mind. He does.
Good evening, Tom Cutler, Division Manager for Whitewater. Tom Cutler, Division Manager for Whitewater. Good evening.
Have there been any OSHA violations or anything on that?
No, but they also have not been looked at by OSHA, so.
Oh, there you go.
Municipalities are exempt in Massachusetts from OSHA regulation.
Are there any other type of agencies that participate or inspect this equipment to, or, I guess what I'm driving at, this is through you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
This equipment then is presumed, we do our own self-inspection on this equipment before we take it out to use it, or we realize that it has some severe limitations that we are asking employees to work on under those conditions?
That's correct. They are inspected daily before each use, and we are currently using this equipment with those conditions. You're correct.
Wow.
Now, set. Counsel McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Mr. Cutler. On average, how much would it cost to rent this equipment if we needed to rent it?
I don't have that number offhand, but I imagine it could be between 500 and 1,000 a day, roughly.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions regarding this? Thank you, Mr. Cutler. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to a roll call vote on this, please.
Counsel McDonald?
No.
Counsel Nicola?
Yes.
Counsel Spinelli?
Yes.
Counsel Vandell?
No.
Counsel Clemens?
Yes.
Counsel Livinggood?
Yes.
Counsel Makuchi?
Yes.
Five yes, two no?
Thank you. Agenda item number 44, vote to ratify the agreement between the town of Southbridge and Schmidt Equipment of North Oxford, Mass. under state contract DCR 461 in the amount of $126,500 for the purchase of a backhoe for the Highway and Sewer Department.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this one? Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Town Manager. I'm looking at the spec sheets, and they're virtually identical pieces of machinery, and I just can't seem to find in the documentation why one is $5,000 more than the other.
Additional pieces, they put a, on the bucket in the back, on the backhoe, they put a thumb which helps them to grab different elements, so they added that feature in because it was a necessary feature that they thought for the operation.
Thank you.
And this on the funding, Madam Chair, it was actually funded at the June 4th council meeting, 60,000 from borrowing, 65,000 from sewer retained earnings, and then the balance would come out to, from the budget.
Any further questions, discussions? Counsel Vandell?
Madam Chair, I will be voting yes on this one because I only wanted to buy one and share it, and they said that they couldn't share it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Counsel Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
No.
Six yes, one no?
Thank you. 45, vote to ratify the agreement with Fuss and O'Neil in the amount of $78,000 for re-engineering design and permitting services in order to stabilize the slope of the reservoir number five dam.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Chair, we didn't, we failed to put in there an appropriation line, so if I could request and appropriate funds from water retained earnings in the amount of 78,000 to fund said request. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any discussion? Nothing? Roll call, please.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Seven yes?
46, vote to appropriate funds in the amount of $750,000 from water retained earnings based upon our current construction cost estimate for construction, police, and engineering oversight for reservoir number five supply and Eastford Road clean and line.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I'd like you, if I could, Mr. Clark, just to briefly explain to the public what we're spending this money on.
Sure.
Thank you.
This actually has two components to it. One of them is to take and reline, basically clear out and reline the reservoir five supply. We actually have right now five reservoirs, and one feeds the other one where we actually pump it up. The reason why we do that is because it was a gravity line that has basically been corroded that we have not cleaned out. So this is an opportunity to spend this money to go through, reline that and clear that out. We do anticipate, I don't have the number right in front of me, but by not having to run the electric pumps to pump the water and to do it by gravity, we do anticipate a fairly good electric savings by doing this, that part of the project. So that's something that, the infrastructure has been there, it just has never been cleaned out to accomplish that. I believe that's the lion's share of the money, too. On the Eastford Road, very similar, we have a line that over time, it's not that unusual for corrosion to occur, different sediments build up, and we do have some water quality issues on Eastford Road that we anticipate that by when we clean and line that, that we will improve the water quality issues in that, in that section of the line. And just one thing, I know some of these numbers are fairly large. We've been successful in increasing the amount of retained earning, retained earnings that the town has, and this year we've made a conscious effort that instead of borrowing money to do some of these projects, that we are going to pay for some of these projects to save the ratepayers. The water rates this year were at zero. The retained earnings went up, and we wanted to use some of those to improve the overall system. So the 750 is coming from water retained earnings for that purpose. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Spinelli.
Was there a question on this one where we were leaking, wasn't there something during the presentation at the subcommittee where we were leaking, or there was an estimation that we were leaking up to 20 million gallons of processed water a day on the Eastford Road section that is now to be replaced also?
I don't believe it was 20 million gallons per day, but I think it was 20 million per year. Yes.
Of processed water that we were already spending money to process, and we're throwing this away so that...
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Good point. Anything further from anybody up here? Okay, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number 47, vote to ratify the agreement between the town of Southbridge and Stan Tech Consulting Services in the amount of $45,000, and to appropriate these funds from water retained earnings for the engineering of the Dennison Hill Water Storage Tank.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. I have one question on this, if I might, to you. Doesn't Dennison Hill already have a water storage tank?
Yes, it does. Those water storage tanks have to be cleaned and maintained, so this is part of the annual maintenance.
Oh, okay. So it's engineering or maintenance?
Well, there's nothing simple in engineering.
Well, engineering gives me the idea that you're building something.
Yeah, but no, it's actually to go through the process of how it's going to be cleaned and how it's going to be maintained.
I see.
But I don't know, since he's here and he's dressed so well, maybe give him an opportunity to comment.
Good evening, Tom Daley, DPW Director. Just for clarity, it's engineering to actually, for repainting the tank inside and out. The tank currently has, the different surfaces inside and out, anywhere from eight to 25% corrosion with its missing paint, we have raw steel exposed. So, we had an inspection done in '08, and they said we should do it within the next few years, and that was four years ago. So that's what this is for. This is the engineering, to put the specifications together, et cetera, to strip and recoat the tank.
So this isn't the actual work?
No.
It's the engineering to get to the work?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have anything? Roll call, please.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Thank you. 48, vote to ratify the agreement between the town of Southbridge and Stan Tech Consulting Services Incorporated in the amount of $26,700, and to raise and appropriate, appropriate seven, said $26,700 from sewer retained earnings for the sludge dewatering system, wow, at the wastewater treatment plant.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the manager. I'm looking at this one and perhaps even some of the next one. Why wasn't this included in the previous project? Didn't we have a big project up there to take care of the water treatment, I mean, sewage treatment plant and...
Yeah, this is a specific component to the operation. Basically, we take the byproducts of what comes out of the treatment, the, I think it was about an eight to nine million dollar project was to add some capacity, change some of the other elements of the plant. This is one that is exceptionally mechanical in nature. We have two units that are up there that were previously put into place that aren't as functional, and we're constantly wanting to have a more efficient process. So this money would actually give us the ability to come in and design out a more efficient, cost-effective process for dewatering. So this is one of those that we anticipate will hopefully, not necessarily pay for itself in whole, but over, over time would be a benefit.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any further discussion on these, on these votes? Roll call, please.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Thank you. 49, vote to ratify the agreement between the town of Southbridge and Sherburne Consolidated Incorporated for sludge conveyor work at the wastewater treatment plant, and to replace belts and required rollers, bushings, et cetera, as per attachments C, in the amount of $125,000, and to appropriate $50,000 from sewer retained earnings.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? One question to you, Mr. Clark. The appropriation of $50,000 is part of the 125?
Yes.
Okay.
The, it came in, we had budgeted in the operating budget 75,000, the bids came in at 125,000. Now, the one above does dewatering, that actually takes the water content out of the solids. This one is actually the conveyor that transports it from the plant into the compost area, and this is one that has just over time worn out. Again, very mechanical process, something that needs updating. But this one, we had budgeted 75, the bids came in higher, and we anticipated 125, we know 125, so we need a supplemental 50.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Roll call, please.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number 50, vote to ratify the agreement between the town of Southbridge and Stan Tech for Phase 1 of the airport reconstruction in the amount of $134,391.81, and to approve the appropriation of funds in the amount of $134,391.81 from the insurance claims in excess of $20,000 account to the tornado damage, Chapter 44, Section 31 account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Just a little bit on the nuance of this, by Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 31, when you have an insurance claim that's in excess of $20,000, you have to deposit it into a specific fund and then draw those funds off of it. The town has received 875,000 plus or minus for the airport damage, and this would start the design process to get us back into the airport business. This is basically for the blue hangar that was damaged in total, and to start to do the hangar that was attached to the terminal building. Phase 2 would be the yellow Quonset hut hangar and the terminal building in one. So basically, there's four different items that are being covered. This actually gets the design on Phase 1 underway.
This has nothing to do with the water line up there? I thought I heard you say something this evening about that, no?
Yes.
Or is that for the money that you're, you're looking for from the, that $400,000 or $500,000?
Yeah, one of the, one of the components right now, there's multiple issues going on at the airport, one component of which is that we have a private well and a private septic system on site, and the well certainly for fire purposes would not be adequate. And DEP has said that we need to improve and provide public water to that site, so that would be essentially, if we get funded for that, that takes away some of the necessity for some of the funding of the airport rebuild.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have anything? Roll call, please.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number 51, vote to discuss a potential amendment to Section 10-104 enforcement under the bylaw by amending line number 7, quote, "Schedule D to F to A to C," unquote, which would change the fee structure from $250 to $300, down to $25 to $100. If voted affirmatively, send recommendation to the Board of Health for their input and recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
I'm assuming a discussion is going to take place, so take a show of hands. Counselor McDonald, go first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't believe we have to send this, or we should send this to the Board of Health. I mean, we're the legislative body for the town. We've received a significant amount of input, at least I am satisfied that I've received enough citizen input to say the fine structure's too high. The Board of Health domain is not bylaws or the legislation part of the town, they're the Board of Health to regulate the health laws. So I'd make a motion to amend, Agenda item 51, to vote to amend Section 10-104 enforcement under the bylaw, and keeping it all there and then striking out the last sentence. And let's just get this done and then go for a second and third reading.
Okay.
An ISO move. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. By making a motion, it makes it difficult at this point for anybody else to speak on the subject, so I ask that you hold back on that.
I would draw my motion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Clemens?
Thank you. Appreciate that, too, Counselor McDonald, because the point and the intent at the last meeting, the EHS meeting, was to bring it up so that everybody could have a little input on this, since it was such a, you could say controversial, I hate that word, but issue. So just, just to your point to the, one of the things that was pointed out to us, and the reason we thought it would be a good idea to bring it to the Board of Health a bit, was that in, in our material on page 7, under code of bylaws, towards the bottom where Mr. Caprera, Attorney Caprera circled some information for us, the enforcement officers are the health agent, the health inspector in this area, so we were just being mindful of that and looking for input. It does not have to affect it one way or the other, it's input, and we just felt that getting, having them review the information, too, that's, that's why the wording was done the way it was done on here. Well, personally, I think the $25 is a little low from what our discussion was there. I do think that the $100 is more appropriate on, on what's been happening. Certainly, we've made a dent in what's been going on, and I think that having trash compliance on a 20-year-old bylaw has been positive for the town in terms of the way the town has looked, the more, the cleanliness, and, and what we've been able to do with it. Obviously, the bylaw committee will be going through and, and looking at this in a more thorough manner in terms of the rest of the components. Some of the people, we still have concerns, I do, on the clear bags. Covers are important, but it is my understanding that we are, we are really looking to enforce the idea that your trash is in a container, to keep it off the streets, cover it as best as possible, and, and making for a better environment in our community, a cleaner environment in our community. So I support the fee structure going to an A through C structure. This would also alleviate us having to really change that bylaw up more, it's more difficult to change that bylaw up into just specifying just one amount. Right now, the bylaw has A through C, and it has D through F. This particular bylaw was enforced by D through F. So to make it a little easier and a little more manageable at this point, going with A through C made sense, I believe, to a number of us on the committee, so that's my input. I certainly would like to see a better fee structure and a better deal at compliance in terms of getting the tenants and the occupants to comply. Also, we did discuss that a bit because the bylaw does say that. One of the things that we are going to put forth immediately, pretty much, I believe, was that, was that the landlords, if a landlord is marking his containers and is making sure that the, you know, that he's told his, his or her tenants what the rules are, given them the information, and they still choose to break the rules and, and the landlord gets a ticket and comes in, and perhaps there are pictures by the police, that type of thing, we will be taking, the, the hearing officers will be very much adhering to recommendations from, from the committee and from the Town Manager in terms of being able to, if the, if the property owner is willing to specify that tenant, who that is, then they will be willing to remove the fine off of the landowner, the landlords, and appropriately apply it to the tenant, and then the tenant will be responsible. So that's something that came out of the meeting that I think is a very good in beginning to enforcement in the right, to making the occupants follow our bylaws and not just the tax-paying landlords or homeowners, so I think we've had some good discussion.
Madam Chairman?
One moment, please. I'm going to hear the council first, and then I will take citizen input, okay? Anybody else wish to come forward with anything? Counselor Vandal?
Madam Chair, I'd like to thank Counselor McDonald for bringing this to the forefront. He's the, this was his baby. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else wish to? Counselor Spinelli?
I attended the subcommittee meeting, and although I am not necessarily in favor of rate, of reducing these fines, I also made it very clear, and I want people to know that I don't believe that these fines are there, as has been characterized by some, to raise money and raise revenue for the town. I don't believe that was ever the case when this bylaw was written over 20 years ago. This bylaw was passed at the same time where we had the junk cars and we had a number of occurrences where the town was being defaced. But I did agree to move this forward because I think it does, it does need to be discussed and to vilified one way or another. The, to me, the important thing about this bylaw is the result that it seeks to obtain, and the figure certainly so, that from 16 to 42% is, is a huge increase in recycling, and that increase in recycling also is a huge increase in the appearance of our town and what our town looks like. And I'm just concerned about the fact that the possibility exists that if we reduce the rates, that we could go backwards, and I'm not interested in seeing that. But I certainly feel that it, that this topic deserves discussion, and I would like to see the Board of Health and input into it also, as a courtesy, if nothing else, but to allow them to also bring it forward. And that's why I believe the wording was put forth like this, to allow other people to put an input into it also, so that more people can participate in, in what we're trying to do here. That's my comments.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Clark, if we make this amendment, and that fee structure is A, B, and C, the $20, $50, and $100, do we have to follow that, or can we set $100? I mean, what leads up to a $25, a $50, or a $100 fee?
I think, well, I'll answer that a couple ways. One, I think the current process that we use, we have revised, and we have significantly reduced the number of fines that have been issued, and we are fining people only after a certain amount of education has failed, and we record what that education is to the individual homes. So that number has significantly reduced. To the point, to the specific point, the way the motion was made the other night was that under Section 1-111, violations and penalties, it lays out a fine structure for all those penalties, and it has an A section, A through C, and a D through F. Because this was to amend Section 10-104 and change from Schedule D through F shall be applicable, we would have to change Section 1-111 in order to effectuate a different schedule than what's laid out there, the $25, $50, and $100. That's not to say that that's not impossible, but just the way this was structured at the subcommittee, it almost lends itself to either that process or coming up with a different one.
Bless you.
I'm concerned, and I agree with Counselor Spinelli. Based on your numbers this evening, Mr. Clark, I mean, when you talk multifamily and single-family homes, you know, there's probably a difference of 90 to 100 in the citations. I would like it to be as less complicated as possible. I know it's an understanding with the general public that, you know, you get a $250 fine, and it's not so. I believe there's a process of four to five steps before you receive that fine.
Correct.
And you're very diplomatic in saying the educational process, and, you know, I believe you're referencing 1 through 4 before you get that $250 fine. So I think that's something that we have to take into consideration, along with the general public, that, you know, the town is certainly not slapping you with the $250 fine for an open container, or you're not using clear bags. There's a process, and I think the town's being fair. And you also have the hearing, so I would ask counselors to really consider this. It's working. I think we have a great service. It's very simple, you know, you don't concern yourself with the fine. I understand what Counselor Clemmons is speaking of because of the multi, the number of multifamily homes we have in Southbridge. But it's easy. Not too many communities and towns have what we have, and that's to leave your home and put your trash on the front steps, and it's picked up with little rules. So I would ask the council's consideration and think about this before we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll refrain from my amending the motion in light of this information, but I think it's important for the public to know that we're not moving forward, I mean, we're moving forward with getting it discussed, but doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to change. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. If nobody up here has anything?
Let me throw my, just.
Go for it.
I think that going to A to C with a $25, $50, $100 fine, $25 for first offense, $50 for second offense, and $100 for the third offense, I think that's plenty, you know? I mean, how much, people are going to learn, they're going to learn fast, if they get up to the third offense and they have to pay $100. Thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Mr. Clark.
Good evening, I'm Roger Calati, Tullia Avenue. One question I have is, when does Mr. Moran have a timeframe when we have one-day pickup of trash in Southbridge? You know, Southbridge has cleaned up a lot since we had recycling program and containers and everything, but if we had one day a week pickup, it would really, really clean all the streets of Southbridge, because there's a lot of this trash, five days a week on the sidewalks in the town of Southbridge, and in one day, trash pickup would be really, really, moving really forward, and I think you would increase, eliminate trash bags for people that don't live in Southbridge dropping off in neighborhoods, and I think this year would really, really improve the quality of life in Southbridge, because it would be a heck of a lot cleaner. Thank you very much.
To answer that, if you'll allow, I've actually had a conversation with a couple of members of the Board of Health, and I know they're talking to Casella about that, but it's not that simple. That's very expensive. And, you know, the one thing that I don't hear enough up here, and I haven't in seven years, about this whole process, is that everybody wants to tweak it, everybody wants to change it, but nobody ever, ever says how lucky they are that they get their trash picked up for nothing. It's a given now. Everybody just, that's just the way it is. Just cross the line and go into another community, and you're going to find out that is not the way it is. So, you know, with all due respect regarding weekly pickup, which would be wonderful, I suppose, for some people, to me, it really, I don't see it as being a hardship every other week, but that's just me, you've got to stop and think about what you've got, and you're getting an awful lot. I agree with Counselor Markucci. We're getting a lot, you know, on this, and we don't hear about that. We're just constantly trying to tweak it. I want to say that this item was placed on the agenda, and as the Chair of the Town Council, it's my obligation to review the agenda and determine what goes forward and what doesn't go forward. And I actually wrote something down. If you'll bear with me, I placed this item on the agenda as it came to us via subcommittee vote, to bring it to the council, to look at it again. We've had a symposium on the trash fees and how to get your trash together. That was led by Counselor Clemmons. We've discussed this issue on more than one occasion, because it's come up in Citizens' Forum. Things have come up in way of vote, and it's opened it up where we've talked about it again. If this was a year where we didn't have a committee that was set up to address our bylaws and recommend possible changes, I would entertain a council vote on whether to adopt an amendment to reduce the fee. But it just so happens that we have a bylaw committee, and I spoke to the Chair of that bylaw committee last Thursday, and to date, nobody has approached the bylaw review committee and talked about this issue. Nobody. Considering how many times I've read letters to the editor, people have come to that podium, people up here have discussed it, and not one concerned citizen has approached the bylaw review committee and asked them to take a look at this. That's telling. I would accept a motion, I'm going to finish, I would accept a motion by the council to have the council request that the bylaw review committee take a look at this. If they want to get a recommendation from the Board of Health, that's up to them. But we were asked to form a bylaw review committee, and we did. And now we're going to be making amendments while they're in the middle of reviewing all of these bylaws for changes. Why have a bylaw review committee? I don't want to undermine their efforts, and I'm not comfortable setting the violation fees when we have a bylaw review committee who can discuss this with anybody who has suggestions on how to change it. That's, it's just as open as the charter review committee was. You can contact any member of that board, you can attend a meeting, you can, you know, give them something in way of what you would like to see the bylaw look like, how you would like to see the schedule changed, and they'll look at it. So it doesn't make sense why we would do this. And just one other thing. Do you actually think that if they changed the penalty for murdering somebody, people would complain about what the penalty was? And the reason I say that is because if all you do is what you're supposed to do, and it's pretty simple, there's no $250 fee. You know, everybody's talking like they're going to break the law, and they're going to get charged $250. I'm not quite sure I understand the mindset. I'm hearing tonight that we've got a 40, almost 43 percent recycle rate. That's never happened. Is that a coincidence? Or is that, this bylaw actually working? And yet, we want to change it to $25, so people will do as they used to do and just pay the fine and leave the trash outside? I'm concerned about the mindset here, and I understand the part about the landlords, but if the landlords tell their people when they're collecting their rents, or send them a letter and say, "This is what is expected of you," and keep a copy of that letter, so that they've educated their tenants, and they get one of these $250 fines, then they can come down to the town hall to one of these hearings with proof that they've attempted to educate their tenants, and give the name to the hearing officer, and the $250 fee goes to the offending party, which is how the bylaw actually reads, if anybody's taken the time to read it. So, you know, I'm not going to be supporting this. I've said it in the past, I think that sometimes you have to wait a little while on change and see how it affects things. So far, I don't see this as a negative change. I see it as a positive change. If you, somebody wants to bring forth a motion to look at these fees tonight, I'm not going to support that. And I'm just one of, how many of us are there? Seven this evening? But I would be supporting a motion to send this where it belongs, to the committee that's reviewing the bylaws right now. Not this committee.
I'll make that in form of a motion.
The bylaw review committee.
I'll second that.
You want discussion on that? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm going to let Counselor Clemmons go first. Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Couple of questions, through you to the town manager. When we've been doing the fines, we've been sticking with D, $250, correct?
That's correct.
We haven't accelerated to $75, $300?
That's correct.
That's correct. So when it says D through F, technically, we're only doing D?
That's correct at this point.
So to the question that was asked earlier in terms of A, B, and C, because I was pretty clear that A and B aren't too exciting to me, I was just working on getting a change, the $100 seemed like a reasonable number. Why is it we cannot just enforce with a C, and they come to their hearing and do their thing for the $100? Why is it that we aren't addressing a D through EF, a D and F schedule versus an A, B, and C schedule? Or is that possible?
I think the answer to that is, obviously, D is, the $250 is the minimum in that schedule, so we would start with the minimum, and then through the concept of progressive, then progress up.
But we aren't.
Well, in fairness, I don't know how many people received multiple fines. I don't know how many people were in that category. I don't have that information tonight, so I don't know how many folks got a second or a third violation.
Well, a number of landlords have talked to me about getting as many as four in one week from various properties that they own, even though they give the information to their tenants, with no disrespect to the chairwoman, I don't see how penalizing investors in our town is going to make it better. And while we could wait for the process of the bylaw review committee, I still would entertain changing this here at our level where we can do that, so I...
I don't think I ever said that I was penalizing the investors.
I didn't say you did, Madam Chair, but you said to send it to bylaw, so I'm saying, for me, it's penalizing the investors in our community by not, by thinking that the people that live in their housing are going to comply without being, it being really enforced. So we end up with the investors getting the $250 and having to go through all the hoops. I just think the $100 or less, if it had to be, is a more fair, accurate number to put on the citizens of this community, and that's just my opinion, because I've been approached by numerous landlords, especially landlords. And there are even some that actually say the $250 is fine, the problem they still have is enforcing it, and what can we do about that? So they understand what we're trying to do, they feel it's, you know, that's fine in one sense, but it's very high, and it makes, it puts a very big burden on them to get other people to not, to stand up and be accountable. That's part of the problem in the world today. People aren't accountable, and that we blame the wrong people. So I just believe that this fee structure is wrong, and I still stand by that and would prefer that.
That's, I'd like to clarify that, though, because I don't think you clearly understand what I'm saying. I am not saying that we penalize the landlord. The landlord has given his tenants something explaining to them that this is how the trash is to be put outside, and he or she receives this, they can bring that letter that says that they've done such a thing and give us the name of the offending party. They can cooperate in that one way. They're out of it at that point. Then we go after the tenant who's actually committing the violation. Where's the penalty to the landlord in that he actually has to give us the name of somebody that we don't have, and therefore, we have to go with the owner of the property? Cooperation is what that says to me, not penalty. It says cooperate with us, and we will do what we need to do and go to the violating party. That's all I'm saying as a response to this. Now, I don't, I don't feel that the fee structure should change, but again, I am just one person. Counselor McDonald, you had something you wanted to add?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Counselor Vandal and Counselor Clemmons that this needs to be reduced. I believe that way, because I had been contacted by quite a number of people, citizens of this community, one in particular on Sales Street, and they all had some stories. I mean, this isn't like, every week, we have to put our trash out. It's not like the analogy of murdering somebody, I understand where you're going with that, but it's not akin to this, because every week, when somebody puts their trash out on the curb, they're at the mercy of somebody coming by and kicking it over, somebody coming by and taking the top, or the top not being put back on their trash can by the contractor, and several other scenarios. The bylaw review committee occurs every five years. It's not a something that's a standing body. It is currently meeting. They're going to review this. We're going to get the input on that. I don't see the need to send it down there. I think this motion as written, after listening to some of the dialogue here, is good. Let's get the Board of Health input. Let's also get some more public input. But I don't expect the general public to know, or everybody out there to know, that the bylaw committee's meeting, but they know that we're their representative voice here, and that we, it's up to us to legislate these changes. And so they've come to us, they've come to me at least, and I'm going to continue to push forward to try to reduce this fee structure. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Counselor Markucci?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Respectfully to Counselor McDonald, I don't think it's respectful for us to supersede a bylaw review committee, especially if they're active right now. I understand the importance, it's not going away. I understand the emotions that are involved in this, but if they're meeting now, I think it's, you know, out of due respect to that committee, we're kind of taking away from them in what they need to do for us. That's why I don't have a problem with sending it down to that committee and let them give us a recommendation. Things are working right now. There's nothing broke right now. I understand people are upset with that $250 fee. By the same token, there's a process, and I understand Counselor Clemmons and her plea also, and I think for landlords, maybe it's something, some type of contract that maybe our town attorney could help them with, something that has teeth, that they could, a contract could be written up, the landlords could come to the town hall, pick up a contract, make it across the board, and something that the hearing officer could abide by. But I don't think there's anything of an urgent nature right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pulaski?
Madam Chairwoman, respectfully, perhaps the reason people are going directly to the counselors instead of the committee, I know I went to the charter committee three occasions. There's a lot of input there, and their work was virtually ignored by the council. So it's easier just to go directly to the counselors, because your message can be lost by going to the committee, and then the council may choose. So by going directly to the counselors, it's a more efficient way of communicating one's concern. Also, they aren't elected. I suspect that this chairperson of this committee has, that it's up on the town's website, but I consider myself having at least an average understanding of town government. I don't personally know who that chairperson is. And also, there's something I hear, it really, I guess, it gets my goat, when people say we have free trash pickup. I know we don't get a bill, but when you take into account, for example, the $7 million cost of the road, you divide it by the six or $7,000 homes, that's $1,000 per household. Plus, our real estate values went down at least 70 percent more than one surrounding town, and at least 30 percent more than the other. So we're also subsidizing that landfill with our real estate value. So, we're also subsidizing that landfill with our real estate values. And if one is to believe the 22 doctors that were against that expansion, we're also subsidizing that landfill with our health. So, it's not free. I wish I could pay $200 to $300 a year and not have... You know, we only put in 4% of that landfill. So, it's 96% from other towns. So, it's not really free. It's only free if you consider the smoke and mirrors that are used to suggest that it's free. You know, health is an important thing. And it's...
Madam Chair, that has nothing to do with what's before the council or the motion.
In regard to perhaps a B, you know, starting like... Some people think 25, perhaps going from B to E. Or even having A and have first offense, second offense, and go up because it's so frequent. Where it does, if you have a frequent abuser, they still get fined $250. And a person who has someone dumping trash in front of their house, if they don't want to bother coming down to go through a hearing to save 25 bucks, they eat the $25. But you have, was it A through F or A through E? Just have five fines, first offense, second offense, all the way up. And that would should take care of everybody's concerns. Not hitting someone hard the first time and hitting the frequent offenders really hard, that may be the way to go, instead of breaking up AD. That may be the... When Mr. Spinelli, he knows better than anyone here, because he helped write it many years ago, perhaps they thought at one time of starting with A and working out. I don't know. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Move the question? Which question?
I was going to say, Madam Chair, you do have two motions that you have before you. One is to refer to the bylaw committee, which I believe was Darlene, was the second from Dave. And then, obviously, you have the main motion that was moved and seconded as well. So, just where we are, we have two right now.
I'll remove my motion. I'll just...
Clarify what question you wish to be moved.
Well, we're on the amendment, so that would be the one that would be moved.
The amendment probably should be done first.
Well, you're going to withdraw his motion?
I made a motion to move the question. I believe it has to be seconded. I don't think it has, but...
And then, he made a motion to... It was seconded?
No, move the question.
Okay. Did somebody second the motion to move the question?
I did.
You did?
Seconded.
Okay. Without further discussion, roll call, please.
Can we be clear on what we're voting on?
We're voting on the amended question to bring it to the bylaw review committee.
Councilor Nicola?
Yes.
Councilor Spinelli?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
No.
Councilor Clements?
No.
Councilor Livinggood?
Yes.
Councilor Markucci?
Yes.
Councilor McDonald?
No.
Four yes, three no?
It's referred to the bylaw review committee. It'll be referred to the bylaw review committee.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Councilor Clements?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could we request... I mean, my concern on the bylaw review committee is that they will not be producing their information for a year from when they were appointed, up to a year from when they were appointed. So, these fees continue, the concerns continue, the fines continue. Is there any way that this is something they could take up sooner than later and make their recommendation before their full report? Or do we have to wait for the full year because they weren't enacted until... When did they actually come on board? It was a while after the June election. They only came on board in this fall, I believe, or some last fall. So, they really aren't going to be report until next fall. So, it basically puts it in the closet. So, that would be my concern, would be that this...
Well, I don't think they can just pick and choose and send things up as they go through the changes. They're going to have to go through the body. And as I was told by the chair of the bylaw review committee, Leonard Laporte, for anybody who wasn't aware of that, they're halfway through. And they haven't come to this yet. I can ask them to make sure that they give it its, you know, due diligence, ask them to look at what you're looking for as a suggestion. They're not changing everything in there, so it may be sooner than later that this thing comes forward. And fall isn't that far away. But I will ask them and I will show them this and how you wanted it, how you're interested in it being changed, and have them look at it from that point of view. Okay?
Then one more request. Could we make sure that the bylaw review committee's meetings are listed on our calendar? Because I don't always see them.
They are. You're right, they're not.
Right. And I questioned the other night when I did see Mr. Laporte leave the town hall. So, I would prefer... I would like to know when they are, because while they're posted, I don't always go to the website.
Absolutely. They should be part of the meetings and board meetings that we get a listing of. Yes, Councilor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. With your indulgence, because this has been controversial, we do need to finalize the vote. We voted on the amendment. We do need to vote on the main motion to make it final.
Certainly. Okay. So, we have a motion and a second on that. We've discussed it. Can we have a roll call vote on this?
Councilor Spinelli?
On the question?
As amended, yeah.
As amended?
Yes.
There was a second motion. As amended?
Yeah, as amended.
As amended?
Yes.
To refer to...
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
No.
No, okay.
Councilor Clements?
I'm still not clear.
We're voting...
We voted on the... The last one was the amendment. And now, we're voting to do it as amended, because they vote... Because we just talked about sending it to subcommittee without...
We amended it to do that. So, now, we have to vote on the main motion and basically, I would expect that everybody would vote the same way they did on the amendment, because it's basically to send it to...
Right. Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because it just seemed like we're voting...
It does.
Councilor Livinggood?
Yes.
Councilor Markucci?
Yes.
Councilor McDonald?
No.
Councilor Nicola?
Yes.
Four yes, three no?
Thank you. Okay. Agenda item number 52, council is for him. Councilor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Want to thank Councilor Livinggood for his service and wish him well. I know he's not leaving town. He's still around, so... But thank you for your service on the council. It's been a pleasure serving with you for the last two years. I also want to thank Conrad Vandal for being a tiger on the rail removal down on East Main Street. And I know for two years, he's been talking about that. And also, to the DPW and the manager for getting that done. There's a lot of people who are very happy. I got some phone calls from that as well, so people are happy about that. I also want to thank a man who's dedicated a good portion of his life to this town over the last several years. He comes from a good family. I've known him since high school. We were in the band together, and that's Ronaldo Bernadone. In my judgment, he put forth a good effort and brought a good sense of judgment to his duties and capacities on the Board of Health and on the liquor board. It's not easy, but I think he's looked at the best interests of all parties concerned, and he served the town well. And I just thank him for all the years of service that he did. And also congratulate Chief DeFranzo on being appointed fire chief and look forward to a successful tenure with him. And that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Spinelli?
I would like to congratulate all the eighth graders who graduated this evening and all the awards they received. I was able to watch most of it, and it's very encouraging to see these young people. For a change, the place was packed, as it should be for all these functions that these kids go through, because they really are the future of ourselves. I'd also like to thank Councilor Livinggood. It's been a pleasure, not only to work with him, but to have met him and to have him be a part of my life. And hopefully, in some small way, I made his life a little bit better. I think he's a credit, a very quiet man, God-fearing man, and I admire him greatly. It's been a pleasure to serve with him, and hopefully, he stays in contact with us forever. The Relay for Life, you know, I have to say this. I've kind of taken it for granted over the years, but I went up there Friday night. And the reason why I went up there is my daughter, who's a schoolteacher at Childhood Street, is a member of one of the teams up there. And she was telling me how they put the little paper bags with the candles inside and they light it up and everything else. And she kind of coerced me into going up, because she said I might find a couple of the bags very interesting. And I did. I went up there with my wife and I. We walked around, walked around a couple times, and then I stopped at her site and one of the bags had my mother's name, and the other bag had my mother-in-law's name, and they both died from cancer. And the shame of it is, is that over the years, I just forgot all about that. And it's something that's very easy to do. We're so busy trying to live our lives and our own lives, sometimes we forget what is and should be important to us. So, it took my... One of my daughters to remind me just how important life really can be. And I just want to say, thank you, Erica. Thank you, Scott, for doing that. My little grandson, Denver, for taking me around and making sure that I noticed this. What a wonderful occasion, and the weather was absolutely beautiful. There's organizations who do a wonderful job up there, the Lions Club for selling things and making the donations to this wonderful organization. And I think people should note that this year, they started off with more funds raised than they've ever had before. They started off with $102,900 and something, before they even... Before the opening ceremony. So, it's just a credit to the people that are running it, that putting it on, and it's a credit to the heart of the people of Southbridge who did it. And I don't mean to be emotional. I just... I lost track of that fact. So, it was nice to go up there, to see survivors, to see people who are honoring other people who care about this disease, and then to be reminded that it hits all of us in some way, shape, form, or another. And on a little quick thing, and I don't mean to do this, I had, along with the eighth grade graduation that went on today, they also had a dinner dance that was put on for these eighth graders. And anecdotal, but a little story. I was asked to chauffeur my grandson and his date to the dinner dance. And of course, he asked me if I would drive the Mustang. And of course, it's been raining earlier in the week, and on Thursday night, it was a glorious night. So, he told his date that it's just an old Mustang, and of course, as Larry, Councilor McDonald can testify, it's really not an old Mustang. It's a four-year love affair for me, and it's a pretty nice car. So, when we pulled up, the young lady's grandfather, eyes bugged out, and the mother bugged out, her eyes, and the little girl. And we were driving down Main Street with the top down, and they were sitting in the back with the seat belts on, and they had their hands up. And of course, we became the center of attention. So, you know, the point is that we have just wonderful kids in this town. They are just absolutely phenomenal. And their sense of life and well-being is just wonderful. And I'll get off my horse, but Cameron, I love you. I'm very proud of you. And to Megan Stella, his date that night, and who received numerous awards tonight, and to all the kids who graduated from the eighth grade and who are going to become part of the first class at our new school, kudos to all of you. Now, I'll keep my...
Thanks, Counselor. Councilor Markucci?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Really quick, Councilor Livinggood, thank you for all your years of service to our community, and I wish you health and happiness. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilor Vandal?
Thank you. I wish well to Councilor Livinggood and enjoy working with you. And on another note, is I'd like to thank Mr. Clark, Tom Daley, Ron Trudeau, and all the Department of Public Workers for doing a great job in removing the railroad tracks. I got a lot of calls on it, and everybody seems to be happy. Number two, through you to the town manager, are we going to pave from the school to the Charlton line up there at the new school? I mean, I went up there a couple of times, and I'll tell you, that road is horrendous.
Yeah, we are going to pave Torrey Road going up from the school entrance up towards the Charlton Town Line.
Is that going to be done before school?
We're actually going to time it, so it'll probably be done in the fall. So, we'll try to time it as close as we can to the school.
And I want to wish my wife a happy 47... That's right, 47 years anniversary tomorrow. Thank you.
Oh, my goodness. Congratulations.
Yes. Very good. Thank you, Counselor. Happy anniversary to you, too.
Thank you.
Councilor Clements?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. First off, if those of you who don't know, there is a wonderful event going on this weekend, Saturday, June 23rd. It's the Blessed John Paul II Parish Multicultural Fair. And part of that has a 5K road race. So, anybody who is interested perhaps in participating, there's still time to contact the parish and find out how you can sign up. I call it... It's called a road race, but technically, it's a walk-run or get yourself across the finish line and participate, support the community, this community event. So, encourage everybody to get out there. And whether you go to the road race or you just want to go and eat some of the wonderful multicultural foods that are going to be available, I recommend heading out to the Notre Dame... The Blessed John Paul II Parish on the former Notre Dame Church grounds, because that's where it's going to be held on Saturday. I'd also like to say, wonderful job and kudos to the Charlton Street School for the great Flag Day celebration that they put on on June 14th. It was wonderful to attend and to see all the wonderful children singing and doing a great job there. Kudos to the administration, all the teachers, and those who helped put that program together, honoring the vets and the flag. It was really a nice thing to be a part of. And other than that, I think I'm done. Thank you. Oh, sorry, wait. Councilor Livinggood. Keep up the good work with the optimists. I'm sure we will not... Your face will not be gone forever. It will be around. So, congratulations on your future endeavors and keep up the good work in our community.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
My turn.
Your turn.
Well, six years ago, I started on this council. I ran because the road was on the ballot. I wanted to see it done. And it got elected, the people pushed, they wanted it done. And it kind of bothers me when I read this thing out of the paper, that it's... You've got to tell the whole story. I mean, the town voted they wanted this road. The town spent, before they even voted on it, over a million dollars. This is something that's been going on for years and years. I see the word detractors, and that's basically what it is. You detract it. It took five years to get the road started, I do believe. And then, there's legal processes you have to go through before you can actually sell the road, which was just taken care of. And I know there are people interested in buying property on the road right now and are looking forward to getting an RFP so they can start bidding. To say that it's a road to nowhere, no. And it's as far as, yeah, it's an empty industrial park. It could have been filled three years ago, but some people felt they didn't want it. But thank God, it's done. It's moving forward. And sooner or later, we're going to have an industrial park sitting up there. It always starts with one person, and it'll go from there. It's been an interesting six years. I had six years on the Conservation Commission before that. And I'm going to miss being here, even though some days, I won't miss being here. And the last thing I want to do is, if it's all right with the council, in less than two or three weeks here, we've got a holiday coming up. And I think too many people really don't understand anymore what that holiday's about. And I'd heard a suggestion that this ought to be read, and since we're not meeting on[1748.13] And I'd heard a suggestion that this ought to be read, and since we're not meeting on July 4th, I thought it'd be a good idea to read it here as my last thing before the council. It's the Declaration of Independence, in Congress, July 4th, 1776.
Excuse me, you're not gonna read the whole Declaration of Independence, eh?
It's only two pages.
All right.
I'll read the names.
Okay.
It's three pages of names. "When, when in the course of human events it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have connected them with one another, and to assume among the powers of the earth the separate and equal station to which the laws of nature and the nature's God entitle them, a decent respect to the opinions of mankind requires that they should declare the causes which impel them to the separation. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with a certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness; that to secure these rights governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the government; that whenever any form of government becomes destructive to these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or abolish it, and to institute a new government, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness. Prudence indeed will dictate that governments long established should not be changed for light and transient causes. And accordingly, all experience hath shown that mankind are more disposed to suffer while evils are sufferable, than to right themselves by abolishing the forms to which they are accustomed. But when a long train of abuses and usurpations pursuing invariably the same object invents a design to reduce them under absolute, absolute despotism, in their right it is their duty to throw off such government and to provide new guards for their future security. Such has been the patient sufferances of these colonies, and such is now the necessity which constrains them to alter their former systems of government. The history of the present King of Great Britain is a history of repeated injuries and usurpations, all having in direct object the establishment of an absolute tyranny over these states. To prove this, let the facts be submitted in a, to a candid world." I won't repeat that part, but I will read, read the end. How's that?
Thank you.
"In every stage of these oppressions, we have petitioned for readiness in the most humble terms. Our repeated petitions have been answered only by repeated injury. A prince whose character is thus marked by every act which may define a tyrant is unfit to be the ruler of a free people. Nor have we been wanting in attentions to our British brethren. We have warned them from time to time of the attempts by their legislative, legislature to extend an unwarrantable jurisdiction over us. We have reminded them of the circumstances of our immigration and settlement here. We have appealed to their native justice and magnanimity that we have conjured, conjured them by the ties of our common kindred to disavow these usurpations, which would inevitably interrupt our connections and correspondence. They too have been deaf to the voice of justice and of consanguility." I'm sorry, but some of these words I've never seen before. "We must therefore acquiesce in the necessity which denounces our separation and hold them as we hold the rest of mankind, enemies in war, in peace friends. We therefore, the representatives of the United States of America, in general Congress, assembled appealing to the Supreme Judge of the world for the rectitude of our intentions due in the name and by the authority of the good people of these colonies solemnly publish and declare that these united colonies are and of right ought to be free and independent states, that they are absolved from all allegiance to the British Crown, and that all political connection between them and the state of Great Britain is and ought to be totally disassembled, and that as free and independent states they have full power to levy war, conclude peace, contract alliances, establish commerce, and to do all other acts and things which independent states may of right do. And for the support of this declaration with a firm reliance on the protection of divine providence, we mutually pledge to each other our lives, our fortune, and our sacred honor." It was signed by 56 people who basically at that time signed their death warrant. If they'd have been caught by the Crown, they would have been killed. We have men and women in the armed services right now who protect this country and everything we hold dear, and one, coming up on the 26th, I do believe, is a day of voting, that's one of the rites that came from this, and you're a fool if you don't take advantage of it. That's all I have, Madam Chair, thank you.
Well said, as usual. Thank you very much, Counselor Livinggood, I'm gonna miss you. Next meeting date?
Monday, July 9th, 2012, reorganizational meeting, 7:00 PM, town council meeting followed immediately in council chambers, town hall.
Okay. Agenda item number 54, vote to enter into executive session, Matt's General Law, Chapter 29, Section 23B, to discuss strategy and conduct collective bargaining.
So moved.
Okay, with the intent to come out and vote, potentially vote, is what you're saying? Okay. Do we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor McCucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Thank you. All right, here we go.
Oh my God. It hurts. Is it getting better? Is it just? I need to move the question.
Thank you, Counselor. Happy anniversary to you too.
Thank you.
Counselor Clemens?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. First off, if those of you who don't know, there is a wonderful event going on this weekend, Saturday, June 23rd, it's the Blessed John Paul II Parish Multicultural Fair, and part of that has a 5K road race, so anybody who is interested perhaps in, in participating, there's still time to contact the parish and find out how you can sign up. I call it, it's called a road race, but technically it's a walk-run, or get yourself across the finish line, and participate, support the community, this community event, so encourage everybody to get out there, and whether you go to the road race, or you just want to go and eat some of the wonderful multicultural foods that are gonna be available, I recommend heading out to the Notre Dame, the Blessed John Paul II Parish on the former Notre Dame